Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie will join us momentarily. Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra.
Presente.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Potemveng.
I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Councilmember Maple, would you please?
My honor, City Council today.
Lead us. Is that done today?
Yeah.
I guess we're too.
Lead us in the.
It's a pleasure to be here today. All right.
Please rise if you are able. So please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Minwok, and the Pachua and Mintum peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contribution, and lives.
Without action is an insult.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a public, puritan, one nation under God, indivisible, with which no other.
You guys are saluting a flag that.
Obviously.
I for this building to be here.
I cannot see. I cannot see who was shouting out.
That wasn't a shout. That was a call from the original people of these lands.
Ma'am, we're gonna. I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you shout out again.
I've already killed all my people to have this building. The least you can do is let me sit here and not be as well seated up there. You guys aren't doing your job.
Please read the admonition.
That's the only reason why I'm here.
Please do not disrupt. Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the Council Rules of Procedure. If you continue, I will order you to leave the meeting. You understand the warning?
You understand the violation of every single one.
You have been given unfair warning. If you elect to disrupt this meeting, we will order you to leave the meeting. Thank you.
You have disobeyed every single treaty that California has ever had since our people.
Ma'am, I.
How dare you stand up there on your pompous arrogant pedestals, talking to the rest of us? All of us are here for a reason, the reason you're not doing your job.
You've been given fair warning and have elected to disrupt this meeting. Please, please leave the meeting or just continue speaking from the audience.
No, tell us why, though. This is our land.
Mayor?
Okay. I promise all of you that you will have a chance to address the city council. But in order to hear all the public's business, including your concerns, and then we have to have everybody just listen to everybody else. And so.
The only quadriplegic woman that your guys' council decided would be in the house by now, and they're not. It's a quadriplegic woman out in the streets right now.
Hey, ma'am.
And that is against your guys' contract, which you made with their resolution. We ought to talk about breaking rules. You all have broken the rules. That's not why I'm here.
What we will do, what we will do, members of the public, is that we're gonna have to recess the hearing for now.
Broke, broke.
And I'm going to.
Taste the consequences.
And I'm going to ask the people in the, in the third row, all of you. All of you, you have to leave. Okay? We're gonna recess until you do. Okay? Thank you.
Powers.
I apologize.
Shame on you. You, California has a fourth.
The city council is back in session. Again, a very good afternoon to all of you, to the members of the public, my colleagues, the city team. We have a packed agenda tonight, and I just want to welcome all of you. It's actually nice to see the chambers full and people participating in, in the democracy in your city. Let us begin with three special presentations tonight. I want to begin with Vice Mayor Guerra recognizing Los Manitos. Vice Mayor?
Los Manitos. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this opportunity. It gives me my great pleasure to recognize an organization here that's provided so much support, encouragement for our seasoned sacramentants here. Let me bring up and recognize 25 years of an organization, Los Manitos. Let's give them a big round of applause, and if I could ask Los Manitos to participate. Por favor. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos aquí a los, los miembros de la organización Los Manitos. Son aquí los líderes que nos han ayudado, nos han mantenido, y han, han, este, producido algo que da esperanzas, continúa los sueños de nuestros miembros de Sacramento, y este, y algo que es muy maravilloso, que da el sabor de lo que es la Ciudad de Sacramento. So in 1939, let me just say that Maria Luera was a, a legal aid, formerly with Legal Aid for the Elderly, and she joined the Ethel McLeod Heart Senior Center, we know it as the Heart Senior Center, here in Midtown. And in 1993, that's when the first, you know, organization and thought process of how do we create something that is for our, our Spanish-speaking community, the Latinos here who have, who are seniors, and who have, and since then, so has, since then has been providing not only enrichment programs, support during the pandemic, they provided an opportunity for seniors. Many of our seniors themselves were isolated. If we remember in the pandemic, they were the first ones that were separated from community. Los Manitos provided hope for so many. So it is my pleasure to welcome here and to speak on behalf of Los Matinos, la presidenta, Antonia Lopez. Bienvenidos, Antonia. Welcome here to the city chambers.
Yes, of course.
Just speak just a little louder so we can hear you, please.
And councilmember, deputy mayor, Guerra, and all the members. Manitos has been, as deputy mayor said, as part of Sacramento's community for 25 years. And at the Heart Center, the city of Sacramento has provided us a space, a home, a place where we could convene, where we could speak our language, where we could share our cultural traditions, where we could be friends to each other, so we could bear each other's witness to our pains and our, our happiness and our grief. As a result of that, 25 years of service that began because Maria Luera, where's Maria? Right there. Maria took it upon herself with her, with the director of the, of the center, to convene the first 35 people. Of the 35 people that she invited, 33 attended. 13 are still with us. We have served thousands of people. We've been at the Heart Center for over 1,100 Wednesdays, Wednesday mornings from 8:00 to 2:00, from 10:00 to 3:00, depending on the schedule. We are really privileged to have had the opportunity to not only meet with each other, but to receive the services that the Heart and the city has given us. Manitos spurred the additional locations. The city of Sacramento has, has sponsored the center called Manitos del Sur, which is here, will celebrate 22 years. At the Robertson Center, the city has supported Parientes. And also La Familia Counseling Center has been inspired by the work that we do. So we thank you for having taken us all into account. We know that loneliness among the Latino community is rampant. We know that loneliness among people of different languages are really often misunderstood and not known. And so we hope that Manitos will give you all the courage and the ability to see that language services to other language speakers, whether they be Mong or Spanish-speaking or Loian or Takai. Every one of us is an, is an isolated community. The Surgeon General this year told us that the results of isolation has severe and dire consequences. When we're in isolation, we have 29% more risk of heart disease. We have 32% more risk of strokes. We have 50% higher risk of dementia, a scourge to this country, 50% more when we're in isolation. And 60% of us will experience premature death. Manitos, because of the city, is an unsung experiment. May you continue to experiment with us and provide this kind of opportunity. We're volunteers. We do it for ourselves. You give us the space. So use your facilities wisely. Bring us in. Bring all the language communities into their, into their areas, whether they be in city facilities, or churches, or other private nonprofits. Bring them in. Let us, let us take care of ourselves. Continue this experiment and show this country that it doesn't have to all be done for us, that we can do it for ourselves as well. Muchisimas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Presidenta Lopez. Yes. I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that when I've gone to see in Los Manitos and, and seen the heart that they bring in, they bring the heart to the Heart Center. Let me tell you that. They, the food, the joy, and when they, you know, when I mentioned that, you know, I was from Michoacan, that one of the, one of the Manito members busted out the guitar and they played Los Caminos de Michoacan, all of them in great unison. And I was just proud to see how much of a community that they have really created for our entire city. And even though the Heart Center's in Midtown, as you heard, they brought it over. And it's from multiple parts. They come from different cultural backgrounds, not only just Mexico, but Guatemala, Ecuador, El Salvador, even Japan. They've got members of El Manitos who have participated in, in there. And it's, if I'm not mistaken, now we have three generations of families who have joined in Manitos, who have come into this senior age, and you have at least two members that are over 100 years old. Is that, is that correct? That's correct. So with that, felicidades otra vez. I'm gonna, before I make my final comment, I see our, the, our, a couple council members, Mr. Mayor, that have signed up to speak.
It's, of course.
Felicidades otra vez.
Let me turn to Councilmember Valenzuela, then Talamontes, please.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, for doing this resolution, and thank you all so much for coming down here tonight and for all you're doing to create such an invaluable community space in the heart of District 4. I'm so proud of the Heart Center and what the city staff does there, and you're just another incredible example of how we can create space for all of our communities. And really excited to visit you next month. I think we have time scheduled for after council recess for us to come say hi, and I think the vice mayor and I might be doing that together. So I'm really excited to come see the programming in action, and just want to thank you so much. I know how hard it can be to keep a program running even for a couple of years. So to think about you doing this as volunteers for this long, it really shows how much, you know, not only passion you have to give, but how much you get out of the space as well. So thank you all so much for what you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to support you as the District 4 council member.
Thanks to. We have to thank the city for allowing us to do it for 25 years. If it hadn't been for free, I mean, they give this space. If it hadn't been for that, it would never happened. So thank you to the city. Thank you very much.
What a, what a positive, beautiful message that you're sending out to the community, and I hope to also meet with you, maybe join the fun. And if you guys have a song about Sacatecas, that's where my parents are from, so I'll be asking for that. Thank, congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also thank, you know, Maria for, you know, a vision that was created over, you know, 25 years ago. And, and you went there to help others, and you as a member now, and to think, to see how much joy comes out makes me, you know, muy feliz, muy, muy feliz. And so, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have any more comments? If not, I was gonna read the resolve in español.
I cannot add to what has already been said, except, except it's just beautiful. And you're beautiful. It's just.
Bueno, tenemos dos resoluciones, one in English and one in español. And aquí, por el alcalde y el consejo municipal de la Ciudad de Sacramento, que reconocemos las contribuciones de los Manitos a la Ciudad de Sacramento, el 27 de junio 2023. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize the contribution of Los Manitos to the city of Sacramento. Felicidades. Congratulations. Thank you.
I think we want you to, we want you to come up to take a picture. Would you do that? Will you do that, please? Be wonderful. You want me to come down, or?
Yes, come down. You're there.
You gotta get your picture.
Come here. Congratulations. Oh, Maria.
Good to see you.
Thank you. You're a thankless love. Thank you.
Really? That's hilarious.
Mr. Mayor, would you combine them? Or? I didn't work. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, one more. What a, what a nice way to start the formal agenda, but we have two more equally celebratory resolutions, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Jennings to recognize my friend, our friend, a champion of this community, Donnie Blumenstock. Go ahead.
That's right. Come on. Give it up for Donnie Blumenstock. Would you please come to the microphone and bring your family with you as well? All right, family, y'all get around this great icon, this superstar. This is someone who I've known for a long time. And before I get to the resolution, I just want to give a couple of comments about you that maybe some know and many don't. 26 years ago, you came to Sacramento, and you and your husband, Robert, have been longtime residents of District 7. And I think many people know you as an incredibly strong regional leader. And when I say regional leader, you're known by many in the city of Sacramento as the mother of regional leadership, because you are kind, you are firm, you are awesome, and you are a teacher. You're always teaching. So some of the things that you've done that have been incredible, the Mountain Valley American Leadership Forum, where you were their first executive director. I saw somebody start to clap. Please give her a clap. I know about American Leadership Forum myself, because while I wasn't in Class 1, I was in Class 2 with 20 other great leaders. But American Leadership Forum, under your leadership, produced and prepared over 500 regional leaders to think, to act, to advocate within the region and for our region, and it just provides for respectful and challenging conversations on some really tough issues and some transformational issues. And you taught us all how to do that collectively and collaboratively in a way that we could run our prospective organizations, our families, and our city. And you did that. You also were in leadership with the Nehemiah Emergent Leaders Program. You didn't just pour into mature and more seasoned leaders like myself, but also young people. So you got a chance to cross all generations, right? The young people and the old folks like me with gray in my hair, right? So you really did that. And I know with NEL, because you weren't with them as long as you were with American Leadership Forum, you were able to have over 200 fellows who are now, who have graduated from NEL and are now doing a great job in the region of Sacramento. Another big round of applause. So here's what Robert says about you. He says, Robert, your husband.
Uh-oh.
I'm talking that for the audience, not for you. I know you know that, for the audience. Robert says terrific mother, incredible wife, and a true community leader. Is Robert right? Sure he's right. Absolutely.
Always.
But he said, one of the greatest gifts that I could tell you, he said, through all the years of being a mother, a wife, and a community leader, she was my friend.
Aww.
Right? Which I think is the greatest gift of all. So this is on top of all the great work that you've done in the arts. I haven't even gotten to the resolution. So I just want to do a couple of wherestases from the resolution and then want to present you with the resolution and have you say some words as well. So the resolution talks about whereas you served two consecutive three-year terms with the Commission, also known as Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission, aka SMAC, under the sponsorship of Supervisor Patrick Kennedy. Whereas you served a term on the City of Sacramento Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Commission, under the sponsorship of Councilmember Rick Jennings. Whereas through your service, you helped to revive the Friends of SMAC and helped the program evolve into the Friends of Sacramento, Sacramento Arts, for which you served on the board. And whereas you led the professional arts leaders of Sacramento for 12 years, and that whereas your love for the arts stemmed from your family roots, your mother was a painter, your father was a woodworker, and you got all of your love for the arts from your family. Therefore, now let it be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize Donnie Blumenstock for her monumental contributions to the Sacramento arts community and for raising the visibility of arts as a critical component of the economic and cultural vitality of the community, of the city, and of the region of Sacramento. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Donnie Blumenstock.
Yeah, Donnie.
Donnie, I'm gonna open the microphone for you to have a few words, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for your trusting me with the role that I played for so long, and, and also to Supervisor Kennedy, who, for whom I served for six years, and to all the rest of the members of the council for being as supportive of the arts as you are and recognizing how vital they are to the vibrancy of this community. I came from a family of artists. I couldn't, I could barely turn on the radio, and I, and I, and I couldn't draw anything. So I had to be an advocate for the arts, because I saw how artists struggle to do their work and to live at the same time. So that's what I've done. There are so many who have done so many mu, more, so much more than I have, that I feel a little bit funny standing here and accepting this award, but I accept it on their behalf, because there are people toiling all over the place. But please, continue to support the arts, because it is so critical to our success as a community. I have here with me my granddaughter and my grandson, both of whom are artists, my daughter and my brother from Ecuador, and where'd your wife go? She's sitting over there. And to Steve and Priscilla, with whom I have served and who have been valued colleagues, and Megan, for your being the czar of the, of the arts and cultural economy. We are blessed to have such wonderful people working for the arts. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I appreciate this very much.
Thank you. Round of applause. For Donnie. Why don't we, as we gather for the picture, I just have to say, as a member of Class 5, I mean, there's so much you've done, Donnie, continued to do, but the arts are just one part of it. But really birthing this leadership movement in Sacramento, where people, and the unique thing about ALF and all the other leadership cohorts, is that you take people from very different backgrounds with different viewpoints, including different political viewpoints, and bring them together. And, and is that a lesson and a template for what will make democracy thrive and survive if it, you know, when it does? And you've done it right here in Sacramento, and it's really had a profound impact, and you deserve this. Thank you.
It's, it's been a blessing. And I have a Latinx leadership program now, accepting nominations. So we are slowly building the diversity of the tables of leadership.
Love it.
We can see that today.
Okay, good.
Do it and run, because you're in my way.
We thought you'd never ask.
Well, you get in the foot of the.
Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, that's the first phone. I've been given a number of them. On the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. And then one more. Because if I don't get this one, I get in trouble. On the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. And do you have a phone you want me to take?
Wait, I got it.
Okay, perfect.
Ladies and gentlemen, Donnie Blumenstock.
Okay. Last but not least here this evening, I would like to present a resolution recognizing Street Soccer USA Sacramento. Lisa Reitzman, Tiffany Frazier, Cassandra Pye, Eric Bjork, all the members of the Street Soccer Board, come on up here for a moment.
Come on.
This is, I'm not gonna read the resolution. I'm just gonna speak from my heart. This is an organization which has really captivated the, the hearts of Sacramento by starting a movement that sees the humanity in everybody. We just had a long discussion this afternoon about homelessness, and it's complicated, multifaceted, but you remind us that we can, we never should lose our humanity, or the fact that everybody. our humanity, or the fact that everybody who goes through hard times in life, sometimes harder than other times, or than other people, that they're human beings. And what you've done to make soccer, to make soccer a way to uplift people and give them opportunity is really inspiring, so inspiring that Sacramento Street Soccer won the bid for the Homeless World Cup. And on Sacramento State, stingers up. Sac State is number, no, I'm not going to do that. The, July, July 7th, I believe?
Eight.
July 8th. We have about 45 countries represented, over 500 athletes who are going to come to Sacramento and show the best of humanity, and that people from around the world who have had the hardest of hard times can still compete and reclaim their happiness, dignity, and life. And that's what this is about. And so a small resolution, I would encourage my colleagues, I know Cassandra might say this, or Lisa might say this, but to the degree out of your discretionary funds or whatever, you can help support this effort, I think this is really worthwhile as they make the budget for Sacramento's first Homeless World Cup. Lisa?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all for your support. I know most of you we've worked with have expressed wanting to work with you. We are a soccer organization, but more than that is we've been able to create a community. This is a small portion of what Street Soccer USA represents. A lot of our other players aren't here because they're working. But what's unique is most of us met about 10 years ago because we were all experiencing homelessness together through addiction, through mental health. And we found a way to connect and do something else positive while we were working on ourselves, and this is what it turned into. We work with many adults, and like with the Homeless World Cup, we'll see that this approach works around the world. But also in Sacramento, from working with adults, we've found that the youth is our way to prevent and not have to connect in their 20s and 30s after undealt with trauma. So we found a way to connect, heal through the game, events and tournaments that help us to celebrate our successes without having to carry the shame and hide behind the corner and hoping nobody finds out our worst secrets. We just throw it all out there. But want to, you know, thank you again. The Homeless World Cup is never going to be here again. We are surprised that it's happening in Sacramento, let alone the US. This is our chance to demonstrate what happens when we invest in people and we allow for opportunity to heal while it may look like soccer, art, whatever. But we can recover, and we can go back in the community and help other people. So this is a team that we're continuing to grow out of the passion of a game that you can have for the rest of your life. None of us are professional soccer players or going to be. We care about Sacramento, and we want to lift up others through the game. One other thing, I have to give a shout out to Donnie because Street Soccer Sacramento wouldn't exist without her leadership programs that we got to be a part of. And then lastly, well, not quite last, this is Yuli. She's going to be playing on Team USA in Sacramento, representing us and the United States. Seventeen years old, but at 14, she walked from Honduras to the US. And she's going to be our goal scorer, an example of what we're dealing with. And if she has the spirit to be here for more opportunity, we want to give her that support and to be that star that she is and inspire others. All of us have a really tremendous story. The Homeless World Cup, starting July 8th through 15th, is going to capture the world's success stories of what we want our community to see when we invest in people and provide the right resources. We need the uplifting, we need the stories, we need the hope. So please join us. And we are looking for a little bit more support for the event. So if you have it in your capacity, you know, please, please support us, but definitely come to the games, definitely watch. It will give us that energy we need to continue this challenge of helping our community thrive. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Another amazing District 4 organization. So sorry, I just can't help myself. I'm sorry. But I just want to commend you all for what you do every day, what you do for the kids at CV Circle New Hovisha, but also what you do for the community abroad. It's been a pleasure to support you. I look forward to getting to know you more. And to my colleagues, I want to let you know that I am, this morning, on the phone with Lisa, committed to $10,000. And I know the mayor is also committing to his office to support $10,000.
Yeah, thank you.
They are almost to their goal. But if each of us is able to commit that, and I know that's a big ask, but if you have it in your hearts and budgets, that would go a great deal to making sure this event goes over the finish line strong. I know you didn't name the number, but I was going to for you. So I'm just putting that out there, colleagues. If you're down to go in with us, I think that would make it. They're so close to their goal. I think you're 100,000 away. So like having our 20K so far, we're trying to get them across the finish line.
We've reached a million to date in six months, so we're well, we're getting there.
Okay, so if you can do it, colleagues, I hope you'll join us. So just want to put that out there. Anybody want to do it right now? No? No? Okay, okay, we'll follow up. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Come on, let's take a picture. All right. Let us move now to the council's consent calendar. Are there items that members would like to either discuss separately or vote on separately or have a no or an abstain referenced on any of the votes? I know Councilmember Maple, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I have comments to make on items 3 and 31.
Okay, hold on one second, please. Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela?
I'd like to pull item, oh, sorry. I'd like to pull item 15 for just comment and a separate vote.
15, comment and a separate vote. Okay. Comment on 7. Anything else? May Protem?
I'd just like to comment on item 4 and item 9.
Okay, I'm also going to comment on item 31 as well. So anybody else? Councilmember Jennings? Rick? You good?
I forgot, I'd like to make comments on item 33 as well, sorry.
33. Okay. All right, let's go. Do we have a public comment on consent?
Yes, Mayor, I have nine comments on consent calendar. I do want to remind members of the public, if you're in chambers and would like to speak on an item, please fill out a speaker slip. Or in Zoom, please raise your hand. After the first speako, we will no longer expect speaker slips, and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. You will have two minutes to address the council, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct. If not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the meeting. So I said, I have, it looks like 12 members of public. The first is Mac Worthy on item 4, Marbea Sala on item 7. Mr. Worthy, then Marbea Sala on item 7. Then on item 15, I have Samuel, Carly Brannan, Amelia Kelly.
Good afternoon, Phil. People, a lot of people don't understand capital improvement. That means the city, county, or state is putting money into their own property. But the key component here is that you don't have competition bids. There's no law saying you have to be a union to bid that work out there. There's no law saying that. You could bid that work, but you have a resolution to eliminate the competition. Now, you can't eliminate free enterprise, and that's what you're trying to do. Now, climate control here, you got stuff running here, a climate control. You know you're going to get some more money from the jerkish president of Washington DC on climate control. You ain't telling these people that part of this money here, the young firm going to take climate off the top. This how this young lady become a superstition over there because here the Rick Jennings supported at the school district. She ain't brought nothing here. Any damn body can say, well, we get a grant, we got people write grants. Let's talk about the how much of that grant going to people that don't even have a house in this neighborhood, homeless. How many that go to? Who gets the training over there? Who do the cop no work? It have to be a union? Wake up, people. Quit lying to the public.
Next speaker is Marbea Sala. Following Marbea is Samuel.
Good evening. Thank you. And the mayor stepped aside, but I just want to recognize his leadership in doing the right thing and handling the earlier situation. And then I also just want to say that it was really very gratifying to see three organizations in our community doing some amazing work, and they're doing it quietly and steadfast in their resolve to make a difference in the very specific communities. And so that gives me a lot of hope. We have challenges, but it gives me hope to see that. But that's not what I'm here. I'm here to speak in support of item 7 in the feasibility study for the Truxell Bridge. I was very pleased to see that and to see that the company, the engineering company that's been selected is, has a really good community engagement plan. I'm also very aware that Councilmember Talamontes is going to ensure that there's adequate and sufficient community engagement with our community. But I also want to just add that the importance of having a way for our community to have an access to the rail yards, to downtown, because currently there is no way. We don't have a way to walk or ride our bikes, and there is no plan. So this, this bridge is just one aspect of it, but much more is needed. So thank you.
Next speaker is Samuel on item 15. Also on 15 is Carly Brannan, Amelia Kelly, Kevin Bolts. Is Samuel here?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, council. My name is Samuel. My pronouns are they/them. Last week during city's weekly city council meeting, members of the public and elected officials gathered to discuss an ongoing conversation around Sacramento's Police Department. The Office of Public Safety Accountability, OPSA, conducted an audit presentation regarding the misconduct of Sacramento's police force. The presentation provided substantial data and evidence of SPD improper search and seizures in violation of citizens' Fourth Amendment rights. Along, myself along with other community members have been attending City Hall for the past four months, addressing various issues related to policing systems in Sacramento City. A local community group presented a list of demands that has been our focal point in our discussions. These demands were inspired by Decarcerate Memphis in response to the murder of Tyree Nichols by Memphis Police. This, these demands have been implemented in cities all across the country with the similar goal, demanding real-time systemic change to significantly reduce harm, violence, and deaths of Black and Brown individuals in the hands of police. As we continue to see items surrounding police on the agenda, I want to reiterate our demands. One, we demand a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. Two, we demand city council approves all S P R C recommendations on military equipment use. Three, we demand a real-time data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. Four, we demand an end to SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Five, we demand an end to SACPD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothed police officers. Six, we demand SACPD's dissolve, its gang enforcement and problem-oriented policing teams. Seven, we demand a moratorium on all encampment sweeps by SACPD. Eight, we demand an end to-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Carly Brannan, then Amelia Kelly.
Hi there, my name is Carly. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a resident of District 2. We've been coming here for years. I've been coming here for years at least. I know many people have come before me and will come after me, demanding things like the end of the use of unmarked cars and plainclothed police officers. More recently, BMB Unity have been coming to these chambers for 17 weeks in a row. That's a really long time. That is a very strong commitment. With exactly, this is one of their demands, the end of the use of unmarked cars and plainclothed officers. Just last week, OPSA gave an incredibly damning report confirming what we've been saying again for years, that there is a systemic race issue in the Sacramento Police Department. So I don't understand how giving these people an unmarked vehicle is going to make our community any safer. If you remember back to, I think it was 2018, I could be off on the year, but it was plainclothed officers in an unmarked car who approached Armani Lee, did not announce that they were police, started a fight, and then started to shoot at him. He is now in jail for many, 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 many years because he was attacked by people who did not announce themselves as police officers. They actually left him to die on the street. They wanted to let him bleed out. When Chief Louie, interim Chief Louie came in here to talk to you guys about being late on releasing the video, he actually let it slip that unfortunately, the suspect lived. So again, don't give him anything more. Don't give him anything more. Defund the police.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Amelia Kelly, and then Kevin Bolts, both on item 15. And Amelia, there's microphones to your right also.
Do we have a mobile phone?
Yeah, we do have a handheld microphone, too, if that's easier.
This should be fine.
Three marked patrol units, seven unmarked sedans, four camera trailers, for a total of $885,290. I can't do everything, Mayor Steinberg. But you can vote to give the city 8.3, or the city's police department, $8.3 million instead of the $6 million needed for 311 response. You can't do anything because protest, being the voice of the powerless, You can't do anything because protest, being the voice of the powerless, you all stood up here with signs and silently protested a white supremacist. So if you don't have the power, who does? We'd like to know so that we can go see them about our issues, because y'all refuse to do a damn thing about it. I was born in this city, and I can't live in this city because you refuse to do anything about rent control or outside landlords. And then you leave the police to enforce punishment for experiencing poverty. And you do nothing to stop them from harming people, ignoring people. I had to drive from Roseville yesterday to get a copy of a police report that I was a victim of. Because the recording for Sacramento Police Department's Records Department tells you to press one if you're a law enforcement agent, or two if you're any other caller, neither option does a damn thing. And when I went to contact the ADA Human Resources today, City Hall next door, not a soul was in the building. I could not file an ADA complaint today, and you want to give eight hundred thousand dollars to murderers.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Kevin Bolts, then Vlad Scott. Kevin is speaking on item fifteen, and Vlad on thirty-one.
Hello, everyone. Don't look so sad. So camouflage is for hunting or fighting in the military. That's when you use camouflage. Now, last time I checked, we shouldn't use tax dollars to hunt our own citizens. We're not so good at that, but we should not do more money towards that, because that's a bad thing. Also, in policing in general, carceral punishments don't work, which is why the recidivism rate is so high in California. Reinforcement-based programs like the one where we pay kids and not shoot each other do work, but you have a whole police force that fights against that. So rapport and reinforcement work, carceral punishments don't. And instead, we're gonna give money so we can hide better and chase people and shoot at them, and probably like SFPD crash into a few storefronts. I don't know if anyone's died recently in this city in a high-speed chase, but they haven't. It'll happen soon. So this is a terrible idea. We spent millions on a military vehicle that didn't keep Officer O'Sullivan alive. We've spent millions on other things that haven't kept people alive or well. And frankly, outside looks like the tenderloin, and now we're gonna give more money to the police. And I really don't understand how that adds up. So, agreed, agree. So, yeah, don't waste more money on the cops. That's about it. Have a good one.
Thank you for your comments. Vlad Scott. Vlad is speaking on item thirty-one, and then I have four callers online.
Good afternoon. My name is Vlad Scott. I was born in Ukraine. Twenty-two years ago, I came to Sacramento as an immigrant with no English, no parents. I had one thousand bucks in my pocket. I start life here completely from scratch. As of today, I run successful business here in Sacramento, over a hundred fifty employees, and I'm very grateful for this city. And many people complain about Sacramento, and you city councilmembers, mayor, very often hear complaints. And it's true, Sacramento not a perfect city, but it's, it's a great city. And I'm very honored to call this city my home. And today, use this few seconds, I want to say thank you very much for your great work and to make Sacramento as a home for, for myself and many other thousands of Ukrainian immigrants who got successful here and other immigrants from other countries. And today, I stand here before you to express my great support for this remarkable sister-city bond between Sacramento, California, and Sumy of Ukraine. I believe this partnership will bring us closer, faster in culture exchange and collaboration and business and education spectors. Let us embrace the power of friendship that knows no borders. Together, we can create a world where unity and understanding prevail. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speakers Evan Minton, and then Corinne McIntosh. Evan?
Hi. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing item thirty-three before the council. Your dedication to our district and the LGBTQ+ community is truly admirable, and I'm proud to have you as my council member. It's crucial that Sacramento takes a supportive stance on these important bills supporting the transgender community, as it signifies the city's seal of approval. And the significance of this cannot be overstated. By demonstrating support for these bills, Sacramento sends a powerful message of inclusivity and solidarity. And furthermore, your support will serve as an influential example for legislators, urging them to also support these crucial bills. I also want to commend the presence of longtime LGBTQ+ supporters and allies on the DAIS. It's truly heartening to see individuals who understand the challenges faced by the trans community, a community that is unfairly targeted and politicized against our will. As many of you know, across our nation, over five hundred bills targeting the trans community, particularly trans kids, have been introduced in state houses this year alone. Unfortunately, California has not been exempt from this wave. Shockingly, hate crimes against trans people have surged by twenty percent in the past year alone. In light of these circumstances, this legislative package presented in item thirty-three provides a unique opportunity to directly address these challenges. Each piece of legislation within this package offers critical protections for trans people, and this is an opportunity to make a tangible difference in our lives. As we celebrate Pride Month, I implore each council member to support this package. And I also want to take an opportunity to recognize Sacramento for going against the grain and supporting your transgender residents. Your proactive role as an active partner and beacon of hope demonstrates the city's commitment to inclusion. By endorsing item thirty-three, you'll continue to support the trans community at a time when-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Corinne McIntosh.
Hi. Good evening. I have comments on item fifteen as well as thirty-three. Do I get two minutes per item?
No, two minutes in total.
Okay. I will hurry up. So, hi, I'm Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco, licensed psychologist and community mental health advocate, resident of District Seven. I oppose the transfer of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Sacramento Police Department, their operating budget, to their ability to increase their fleet by fourteen units, which would include three marked utility vehicles assigned to a mental health response unit. Just a few weeks ago, the city council gave SACPD a three-point-five million dollar raise, bringing their budget to an all-time high of twenty-eight million. Just last week, we had an extensive hearing on SACPD's racist and aggressive policing strategies that directly, as well as indirectly, harms our communities, especially those characterized by poverty and racial segregation. It was last week also where Mayor Steinberg said that the only authority this DAIS has over SACPD is with budget. So here is an opportunity to exercise that. People with untreated mental illness are sixteen times more likely to be killed during a police encounter than other civilians approached or stopped by law enforcement. Police are not mental health professionals. We need to stop tasking them and funding them as such, and actually start standing up the departments that are supposed to be doing that job, such as Department of Community Response. In regards to item thirty-three, I am in strong support, especially, I'm so, so glad that SB three-seven-two is included in there, which is the Respect for Names Act. This is an initiative that came from the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, which I have the, the absolute honor and privilege of serving as president of. So glad that Senator Menjivar has taken that up. We have passed all of our committees so far, both on the Senate and Assembly side, and to have my hometown to give formal support would be really, really cool. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Colin User, too.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I was gonna comment on number thirty-one, Sister City, but miraculously, someone named Josh from the, from the mayor's office, give him a raise, mayor, that was perfect timing. He explained that to me. So I can focus in on number thirty, the auditor's report. I'm, I'm becoming a big fan of the auditor because he's starting to show me integrity. In his report, which I studied personally, there was a, an incident that was called executing a contract with the wrong entity without written agreement compromised the city's ability to audit wide-open walls and David Saban events. That was an incredible job by him. I remember when that bombshell hit, and it exposed, as a person who has a business that submitted a lot of paperwork to City Hall, written paperwork, and didn't get hardly any money, and then you see a white company get this type of agreement. And I have done my research on this company, and they're still getting funding from City Hall. I'm against that. I think that money should go to Core, and it should go to To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes because we haven't been caught in one scandal, especially To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. We just went viral during Father's Day weekend, and we also received a five-star review. So give that money back and stop giving money to people who get contracts with no written agreement, and they don't have to pay it back. That's against the law, and they should be brought up on charges for that and anyone else who, who signed off on that. Cut the money to more black organizations like To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. Thank you.
Keep your comments. MDS is our final speaker on the consent calendar. MDS, if you'll unmute. MDS, if you'll unmute. Mayor DePierce, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you to the members of the public. Let's go to council comments on the consent calendar. File item three, Councilmember Maple had a comment.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just really wanted to appreciate staff on this. So this is, this will allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Megan Park and Charlie Park improvements in my district. This is huge for our communities. These parks, you know, provide so much value to our young people and to, to our neighbors, and, and these parks have been in need of some help for some time, and so just really grateful for all the work, and especially around, we know it's been, it's discussed at our other meetings, that deferred maintenance is a huge issue for, for our parks, and so I'm really glad that we're spending the time and energy to do this, and grateful to staff for their work. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pertham Vang on item four, please.
Thanks, mayor. This item established a capital improvement project for the Pennell Community Center, and also allows us to accept a grant. I just wanted to take this time to thank Jennifer Venema, our climate action lead, and all the staff that worked really hard to secure the California Air Pollution Clean Air Grant. The grant's actually gonna help us install upgraded air filtration system at the Pennell Community Center. And as many of you know, the Pennell Community Center is, I consider, a resilience hub because during extreme weather, it is there as respite, and so really excited that we received this grant to really upgrade our air filtration. And so just really wanted to thank Jennifer for, and, and, and our entire staff for their hard work to secure the very much-needed dollars from the state. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Talamontes on item seven.
So I always talk about people living north of the river having better transportation options to downtown. So tonight, we're voting on a feasibility study for constructing a bridge that will enhance traffic flow, reduce emissions, and improve accessibility. You know, we're really close in distance, but there's no direct and convenient route available for biking, walking, or for public transit. So there's a lot of strong feelings about this item in my community, and to my community, you have my commitment to work with the consultant and our city engineering teams to make sure that all voices are heard and that we're all on the same page on this project.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Councilmember Valenzuela. I know you wanted a separate vote, but why don't you make your comment now, please?
I'll just make my comment now. I just, I, I'm frustrated that this is coming so soon after the budget discussion because it feels like these are important policy discussions, I, especially around the unmarked mental health vehicles, of which we're purchasing three for just over three hundred thousand dollars, and just unmarked vehicles in general. I, I hear what the community is saying in terms of a policy conversation around that, and I just think that's warranted. You know, what is the function of not identifying ourselves as police in certain circumstances is something that, and not, not something I want to hear from tonight, if that's okay? It's just a question that I think is important. So I, I won't be voting for this item. I'll just be abstaining from this today, and I just want to flag those as important conversations. We just had a really robust conversation two weeks ago about whether we should be doing mental health response out of PD or out of Department of Community Response, and this just feels like it would have been an important part of that discussion when, when it came to budget resources for VCR. So, thank you.
On item thirty-one, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on this item and, and some praise. So this is the establishment, endorsing the establishment of a sister-city relationship with the city of Sumy in Ukraine. And so this first came to my office by Mr. Mayor, who is the executive director of the Ukraine Aid International. For those who don't know what, what that group is, they are frontline mutual aid, so they're literally providing meals, water, and support on the ground to war-torn communities, their children, and those who have been left behind, and so doing really important work. And their ask was, we would like to establish a, a sister-city relationship, which is something that I don't think has happened in quite a long time in Sacramento. As you see outside, we have a signpost that has many sister-cities, but I think it's been quite some time since we added one to the list. And so, so I called our mayor, Daryl Steinberg, and I said, hey, would you be willing to get on a, on a phone call with the mayor of Sumy? And he said, absolutely. And so I've heard that it was a great phone call, and I'm sure you'll go into a little bit of detail about that. But I wanted to thank you, mayor, and your staff and the clerk's office for helping, my chief of staff, Ryan Brown, helped navigate this kind of a new thing again, because I think it's been so long since it's been done to establish a sister-city relationship. Want to thank, you know, the Sumy mayor, Lysenko, as well as the Ukrainian consul general and the Ukrainian-American House Chairman as well. And I just think it's, you know, when we look around us and we're seeing how fragile democracy can be, not just in our nation, but sometimes in our own backyards, I think we, you know, myself, I think about how we can double down on our commitment to, to democracy as a whole and, and support those who are struggling in that fight around the nation. And so if, if it's this little thing, I hope that it can be a big thing, and it can also be a way that we, as a city, can show our support to the Ukrainian refugees that settle here. We have many. We also have many great organizations doing this work. So just wanted to give that background, and I also wanted to let folks know that we'll be doing a press conference here at City Hall on Thursday, the twenty-ninth, so that's this week at nine-thirty a.m. And so there'll be more information there, and I encourage you to come.
Celebrate this. Yes, thank, thank you, Councilmember Maple, for initiating this and for, and for setting up the call with the mayor of Sumy, Mayor Alexander Lysenko. It was a perfect phone call, by the way. I was gonna say, sorry. Little, little historic reference there. It, it was, it was actually, it was a great phone call, and you know, we know the, the highlights, if you will, if that's what you can call them, they're not really highlights, but we know the outlines of the Russian invasion of Ukraine and how it continues today. But we don't know about every city and every individual story, and, you know, I learned that Suni, Sumy is a city in northeastern Ukraine, the capital of one of its largest regions, and it was one of the first cities to be invaded by Russia at the beginning of the conflict. And they fought off. I mean, they were threatened with their survival, and they mounted a defense, and they survived. And now they want to be our sister city. And what a, what a great message that sends to the people of Sacramento, and hopefully comfort to the people of Sumy, Ukraine. And maybe we'll even go there and, and visit them if it's appropriate to bring them whatever we can bring them, to make sure they know they are not alone in this war. And so we'll have a press conference on Thursday. We don't, we haven't done a lot of sister-cities recently. I mean, it's a lot of work. I know, Madam Clerk, it's a lot of work. Thank you to you and your staff, remember, but if there was ever a new sister city to take on, I can't think of a better one than helping the people of Ukraine, in Sumy, Ukraine. So thank you. Very good. Okay. Finally, item thirty-three, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments of Evan Minton, who called in earlier, just with how proud I am to see the city of Sacramento taking-
proud I am to see the city of Sacramento taking such a strong position on transgender rights and healthcare and all of the issues that are currently under attack nationwide. I did want to make a request. In addition to thanking Evan for their strong advocacy and leadership on this issue, there is a bill missing from this resolution that we voted on, AB 5, or 957, by Assemblymember Wilson, which strongly, or requires the courts to strongly consider that affirming the minor's gender identity is within the best interest of a child, even in the case of a non-consenting parent. I just want to make sure that doesn't get missed. It was voted 3-1 out of law and ledge, so it should have been included in this resolution, and I just want to make sure that's noted. I don't know if we need to amend a motion when we do this item to make sure it's included as support, but yeah, I just want to make sure that bill doesn't get left off. And want to thank Law and Legislation Committee colleagues for the robust discussion and support.
Okay. So, with the exception of item fifteen, I would take a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
And can we add amending thirty-three to add AB 5, 957?
Yes.
Consent adding.
Add amended by Councilmembers Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, that passes. Item fifteen, there's a motion.
I'll move item fifteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. We'll call the roll on that one, please.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Loey. Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Abstain.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Vang.
Abstain.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right. That passes. Excuse me. No shouting out. That's the consent calendar, and now let's move to the public hearings. Item thirty-six, please, the housing project.
Mayor Steinberg, before we get to item thirty-six.
Yes.
I'd just like to make it easy. On item thirty-eight, I'm requesting, just continue this item till our next council meeting that we come to after recess. I'm requesting a meeting between the developer and Rio Linda Airport. They have never met on the project, so I'd like that to occur before item comes back to council.
Sure. Is there any public testimony on this item tonight, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-eight?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have no public speakers on this item.
Then why don't we move to continue?
I'll second, please.
Move to continue.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Thirty-eight is continued.
And can I just read to the record so that it's continued to the July 25th meeting?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, very good.
So, we're continuing to a date certain of July 25th.
Okay, very good. Now, let's go back to item thirty-six. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sierra Peterson, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. This item is a proposal for a mixed-use development with ground floor commercial and 40 apartments, of which eight are deed-restricted affordable housing units. Requested approvals include a rezone and a site plan and design review. Staff recommends approval based on consistency with policies and goals of the general plan, central city-specific plan, and historic district plan. The project was presented to Preservation Commission on May 17th, 2023, and to Planning and Design Commission on May 25th, 2023. Both Commissions unanimously forwarded a recommendation for approval to the City Council. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant, John Vignoki, would also like to share a brief, some brief words, if you may.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vignoki, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is John Vignoki, and I'm the project applicant representing my firm, Urban Capital. Thank you for taking the time to study and consider our project, The Grace at 15G. If it's acceptable to the mayor, mayor reserve some time at the end of the comment period for rebuttal in case there's any public comments.
If it's necessary, sure.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. Before we dive in, I want to thank staff. First, thank staff. This privately financed affordable housing product would not have materialized without staff's guidance, specifically Ms. Peterson, Mr. Monaghan, and Mr. DeCoursey, so big thanks to them. The site that The Grace will be built at is located in the corridor of a budding commercial corridor with 129-unit Holiday and Redevelopment Project across the street, Milk O' Coffee, and the UC Davis Health Pavilion. As you can see, the project's site is vacant and very underutilized. Our team took a thoughtful design approach that represents the historic neighborhood through the use of setbacks, stepbacks, articulations, and material changes. That's summarized here, and we'll get into all that text. Most importantly, this, The Grace provides important housing, 40 well-designed workforce housing units, 20 of them deed-restricted, affordable, for families, individuals that qualify as lower-income earners. Further, this project transforms a vacant site in the urban core, and as confirmed by SACOG, it's transit-oriented, providing people with an opportunity for a car-free lifestyle. The site's current zoning and FAR, floor area ratio, restricts the use of this property to a less-dense, higher-priced housing product, for example, seven to eight townhomes. And as a development group, this doesn't interest us. We don't believe it makes as much of an impact and serve, provide housing that we so desperately need. We're proposing a project that exceeds the FAR, makes minor deviations from transitional height restrictions, and rezones half the property from R3A to C2. To exceed the FAR, we were required to provide significant community benefits. The original guidance was 10% of the units, but we voluntarily restricted 20%, or eight units in total. In addition, we had strong coordination with the neighbors. We have strong support from the Alkali Mansion Flats Neighborhood Association. We mitigated some concerns with some neighbors off of Fat Alley and F Street. We also addressed concerns of our immediate neighbor above and beyond what the city was The Grace provides affordable housing, transforms a vacant site in the urban core, activates ground floor, the ground floor through mixed-use retail, and was designed to be respectful of location and surrounding uses, and we believe it deserves your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vignoki. All right, do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have 10 speakers on this item. The first is Chris Palomo, Giovanni Adolini, Alonso Quintana, Mackworthy. Ms. Chris, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field rep in the NorCal Carpenters Union, right here in Sacramento, Local 46. I stand before you to address a matter of utmost importance, the proposed Grace project by Urban Capital. While the project promises economic growth and development, it is crucial that we, as responsible citizens, pause and consider the true impact it will have on our community and our workforce. You, as leaders of this city, have a responsibility to represent the interests of the people, ensuring that the projects approved align with the values we hold dear. Unfortunately, this developer seems to prioritize profit over the well-being of the workers who will build this project. The developer has stated in a previous article that there is a disconnect from reality and that prevailing wage means the cost goes up 30% to 40%. Well, I'm here to tell you that is false, and the actual increase on the overall project for paying prevailing wage is 6%. The developer also stated that the non-union workers earn, that they earn a good living. If they earn a good living, then why do three out of five rely on government assistance to make ends meet? Why are they living out of their vehicles because they can't afford rent, and they're living with 10 other workers in a one-bedroom apartment because that is the only way for them from ending up homeless? We cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that this project does not make a commitment to area standard wages, workers, healthcare, or a state-certified apprenticeship. As a community, we must recognize that the strength and prosperity of our city rely on the welfare of its citizens, including the hard-working men and women who will build here. So, we must question the motivations of Urban Capital behind this project. If we're truly intended to better our community, shouldn't prioritize the well-being of those who build it. It is disheartening to see that the interests of these workers have been overshadowed by the pursuit of financial gains, and this is not the kind of development that we need here in Sacramento. As leaders of this city, it is your duty to ensure that our city thrives in a way that uplifts all inhabitants. By saying no to Urban Capital, we send a message to bottom-feeding contractors and developers that Sacramento will not stand by while workers are treated so poorly. We demand a project that not only brings economic growth, but also fosters a sense of community. We must prioritize the well-being of those workers and demand fair wages and stand firm in our commitment to build a stronger and more inclusive community. It is time for us to show that profit should make.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Giovanni Adolini. Following Giovanni is Alonso.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Giovanni Adolini, and I proudly represent over 3,000 hard-working men and women that are members of Carpenters Local 46 here in Sacramento County, some of which joined me tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight regarding the ongoing wage attacks against blue-collar families in Sacramento. There is no doubt we are in a housing crisis. We have over 9,000 unhoused people in the Sacramento region, and affordable housing is scarce and inadequate. We all need to work together for affordable housing solutions. However, exploiting the hard-working men and women building Sacramento is not a solution and only perpetuates the cycle of poverty and misery. Unrepresented carpenters in California, on average, earn under $22 an hour, and more often than not, with no healthcare benefits, all while working in harsh and dangerous conditions and being at the mercy of weather, hoping not to get rained out, or miss a day's work for another unforeseen issue out of their control. It is a slap in the face to me and the men and women building Sacramento when a developer says that we need affordable housing for everyday Sacramentoans. That's really where the acute need is right now, is really in the areas where people are making $60,000 to $80,000 a year. He then goes on to say that many non-union construction workers earn a good living. If a good living is earning $44,000 a year, which doesn't even qualify you to live in the affordable to middle-income housing he is proposing to build, then this is truly a let-them-eat-cake moment. I will not sit back and allow rapacious developers continue to minimize and diminish the skills and sacrifices of blue-collar families trying to survive in one of the most expensive states in the nation. Sacramento's hard-working carpenter families deserve robust labor standards to preserve their path to the middle class and a shot at the American dream. Adopting labor standards that consist of paying area-standard carpenter wages, comprehensive healthcare, and opportunities for apprentices, and commitments to hire locally will greatly impact the lives of the men and women of Sacramento that bring these projects to life. Thank you for your time.
Comment. Next speaker, next speaker is Alonso Quintana, then Mackworthy.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Alonso Quintana, and I've been a member of the NorCal Carpenters Union since 2018. Before I joined the NorCal Carpenters Union, I was living in my van in Oakland, California. It was a community plagued with homelessness, crime, violence, and drugs. With only a GED and no opportunity for college, I felt helpless and trapped as I looked around and saw no real opportunities for a meaningful life. For years, I battled the demons of substance abuse and dealt with the negative police interactions associated with it. The exposure to the toxic environment I was living in took its toll on me. I felt broken, discouraged, and saw no end in the misery I was experiencing. It had gotten to the point where I didn't want to live anymore. It was not until I saw my brother-in-law, who shared similar challenges, as I get out of the state correctional facility and join the NorCal Carpenters Union, that I saw the transformation begin for him, and I watched his life start to improve, and I wanted the same for myself. I was fortunate enough to become an apprentice at the Local 68 in Oakland. There, I was given the skills through the apprenticeship training facility that allowed me to earn a living wage with health benefits. With the ability to earn a living wage and the many support programs and committees offered by the Carpenters Union and the support from my brothers and sisters in the field, I was able to get clean, which enabled me to leave the toxic environment I was in and relocate to the Sacramento Valley. Now, I am clean and sober and proudly a productive member of my community. Unfortunately, I see less and less projects being approved in Sacramento that provide the pay and benefits that are instrumental to my transformation. There's a direct correlation between poverty, substance abuse, homelessness, and negative police contacts. Mandatory labor standards in Sacramento will greatly improve the lives of vulnerable communities that seek to utilize company work as a way to improve in their lives and becoming productive citizens. It is my opinion that developers that want to build in our communities should invest in those many women that build our community. Thank you very much.
Mackworthy, then I have seven speakers online.
Man, the education of rezoning. Our one zoning go commercial, you will never get it back. People, please, please understand what you're doing to this city. All this stuff about wage waiver means nothing. I made it close to $100,000 a year, and I never paid a penny in the union. Teach these young men when they learn, and I can show you the work from the county detectives built to split lever over beer cans. You could read a blueprint, only thing you need to do is get it approved by an OCHTEC. Put your money together. Here ain't no union. The big-time boy is making your money. If you was a union, you would know everybody's name, and look, man, let's put some stuff together and build a house here, and the warrants won't out, we get the mortgage and pay them out. And you make your money. Now, you run it out, there's a factor of depreciation in there that's a windfall. But this compound here don't have the knowledge. They will rezon everything they can and call it affordable housing. That's how they taking your money. We hurt this shit 10 years ago, and still you are pimping these people with the money. Mixed housing, with the little places under the housing is stolen. Who gonna open those stores up? To Ukraine, they just stole you. He come here, and he got a business going. Tell the American Negroes and others, when you come here, you government give you a check. The Russians on White Avenue, the Czech cash, and they within the business, and you have to put a maraturo on it because they blocking the bank of making money. Tell them the truth, and they will educate them damn self. What in the hell have you all been doing, taking the people money? You're lying, you're lying and a sack of shit.
Our next speaker is Ian.
Somebody get him some help. Hello. Hi, my name is Ian Hopps. I'm a local actor and artist here in Sacramento, live in midtown, very close to John, actually. He's been a great neighbor and friend, and it's been exciting to follow his project as he and Urban Capital have been planning, planning out The Grace. And I just wanted to voice my support as a neighbor and actor who works at the Sacramento Theater Company, right down the street from where the proposed project will be, I think would be a great boon for those of us who work at STC, at Music Circus, the other theaters in the area, particularly with the mixed-use building having a restaurant downstairs. That area really needs not only the affordable housing, but, you know, for artists like myself and my colleagues to afford to stay in midtown, but as well as the public to come enjoy local events, enjoy the theater, not just to, you know, drive out and drive home afterwards. They'll have somewhere to go, enjoy themselves, and yeah, I hope that you will consider approving the plan as the other committees have so far, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Sean Wright is our next speaker. Sean Wright, if you'll unmute.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Sean Wright and president of the Alkali Mansion Flats Historic Neighborhood Association. Asking for your support of the, and approval of The Grace project. Our association has worked with the developer from the beginning of their application, and they've made many adjustments to the project and to make it something we can support. They've increased the setbacks for the neighboring home to allow for more natural light, they've addressed concerns regarding increased water and storage usage impacts, they've addressed parking, and many other concerns and concessions. The project meets many neighborhood objectives by providing a variety of housing types, both market-ready and affordable housing, while also providing neighborhood store and retail on the ground floor. No project is perfect, but Mayor, to use your words, do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a great project, and I ask for all of you to support it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Henry DeVere White.
Hi, good evening. I hope you all can hear me. Good evening. My name is Henry DeVere White. I know most of you, some of you I do not know, but I do own a few small businesses here in downtown and midtown area. I'm calling to express my support for this project. I think upon its completion, it will be a welcomed addition to the neighborhood. This project will create much-needed housing, and it will also create a space for the community to come together. This is not only a fantastic project for the neighborhood, it's a positive step forward for our city. I believe the City Council should support projects like this as we rebuild the downtown core and strengthen our neighborhoods as they stand today. We just need a little bit more. I appreciate your time, your consideration, and more importantly, I appreciate your vote and support of this project. I thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Uncle Ted.
Yeah, I would like to say that I would like to see workers employed. I do see this as an opportunity to bring employment to the Sacramento area. Affordable housing is important. Apparently, there's a lot of people that are unable to afford the expensive housing conditions that we have here in Sacramento. The wages don't match the living conditions. It takes far too much money to be able to afford to live in a house. What I would... What I would like to see, though, is that this affordable housing is taken care of and that the approval of the people that are allowed to move in, that we actually take the time to make sure that the people that are being approved to live there maintain this property and keep it nice and to where it's actually a draw to the community. If we're going to have a restaurant and stuff for people to access, it can't be a draw for a lot of the issues that we have within the Sacramento region, which is homelessness and drug addiction, and it becoming a squatting area. I would like it to maintain its beauty. I would like to see carpenters and apprentices having a new job and access to more programs. So as long as we're able to teach the youth how to work and build, that's what I support. I don't always agree with what this council does, but this is something I actually do agree with in a sense. I feel like we do need to get people into housing that's affordable. That's something I can agree on. I just want to make sure that it's, again, it's maintained and that the corporate elitists aren't the ones making all the money. I would like to see the carpenters paid a fair wage. I would like to see open bids on the job to where, you know, it's not necessarily just going to whoever feels like they can make the most amount of money. I do understand the carpenters' union. I was a union member myself in the past. They do a lot of good work, but I would like to see the bids and stuff going to more than just the unions in the area. So my stance is I support it as long as it's going to be used in a, in a way that's going to benefit the Sacramento region. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And Gina is our next speaker. I have three more speakers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Najina Guyton. I am the former owner of South Restaurant, a downtown restaurant, and the current owner of Jim Denny's, which is located a few blocks from this site that we are discussing. I'm calling to express my support for the project, and I think it will be transformational for the neighborhood. I've worked with John in regards to this project, and he has absolutely listened to the neighbors and the understanding of creating a sense of community, understanding the woes that have happened over the past years in certain neighborhoods in regards to small business and its relationship with new developments and affordable housing going into those neighborhoods. And his goal has never been, from the very beginning, to take away from this neighborhood. It's just to add to it and strengthen its sense of community. So I please ask that the city councils support this project. I thank everyone for their time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Samir Benoir is our next speaker.
Hi, this is Samir Benoir. I am the owner of Milk and Coffee Roasters just across the street. I have lived in the neighborhood and believe that we need more restaurants and more businesses, and the Grace is going to be a huge, just a, it'll be a nice addition to the energy that's been building for the last few years in our neighborhood. And I'm excited to hear that we'll have some new neighbors and people will actually be able to afford the units. We do have quite a few employees who are becoming, are being priced out of our neighborhoods currently, and we'd like to see a few more of these buildings go in that will accommodate them and allow them to live a happy and healthy life. Thank you, and yeah, have a good one.
Thank you for your comments. James Allison is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor and staff. My name is James Allison, and I am calling today with the Midtown Association to voice our support for the development of the Grace. Midtown Association is a property business improvement district that represents over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. Within that mission is a goal to pursue the development of responsible urban infill projects that can help to meet the needs of our evolving district. The need for a robust housing supply cannot be overstated. In concert with our current shortage of residential units is the need for urban areas to adapt to a changed post-COVID landscape. The future of our central city's economic viability will depend on embracing new mixed-use development and adapting to attract new residents and businesses. It will also mean bringing in a diverse stock of affordable housing across our city, supporting creative projects like this as a future for models for affordable housing production. This project takes what is now an undeveloped and underutilized space within the heart of the central city and brings in 40 new residential units with eight income-restricted units, as well as retail and patio space. Additionally, it advances the city's land use goals of promoting growth and attracting new residential and employment opportunities by bringing both within blocks of the city's central business district. The request to develop this vacant parcel, which currently serves as little more than a parking lot, is consistent with the intent of these goals and a prime example of responsible infill development. Sitting within the transitionary area between a bustling business center and residences, the scale of this project brings a sensible balance between increasing density and maintaining the character of the neighborhood. This new development will bring in 40 new residences and a much-needed sense of vibrancy to a part of the city already poised for it. We ask that the council joins us in supporting this project by granting your approval of the project and its requested rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank you to the members of the public for weighing in. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Mr. Vinyoki, can you come up here for a moment? And while you're coming up here, I'll just say I don't disagree with the points that a lot of the supporters made. Underutilized lot, affordable housing, really exciting business opportunities, great design, like all of that, fantastic. And I applaud you for taking the steps to try to include affordable units beyond what was required. I think that's really fantastic. I do, though, want to ask you about some comments you've made recently to the Business Journal about labor, and I know you heard them repeated in public comments here tonight, so I don't feel like I need to repeat them again, but I'm wondering if you care to respond to the concerns raised here tonight about your, your stance on that issue.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on a second. There you go.
Yeah. So, number Valenzuela. So first off, our firm loves solving problems, and we're a very big supporter of labor. We love paying high, paying fair wages and good wages. I think we do currently pay fair wages and good wages. Up until this point, I was in trenches, shooting nails into wood, cutting lumber myself. I know a lot of the subcontractors who are working on these projects personally, and I know generally how much they, how much money they make, and they make pretty good money, actually. Five years ago, when I entered the business, a lot of them used to have to go to the Bay Area and commute to work, which is a very troubling commute. And over the last five years, the wages have increased substantially and significantly, where a lot of those subs, like our plumber, our roofers, they're all working here now. They don't have to travel to the Bay Area to make money, and so I view that as progress. Our firm is absolutely pro-union on solutions that we can provide. I think we've, we've proposed solutions for interim housing projects for unhoused people and people experiencing homelessness that use 100% prevailing wage in union labor. It's just I can't solve every problem. We're trying to deliver privately financed affordable housing, which I think is a mission that we can all get behind, but I can't do that if the government forces me to use prevailing wages, which are higher than market wages, but I believe the market wages are also fair. These people voluntarily show up to work. Also, furthermore, I mean, I love engaging with stakeholders. We've done that throughout this project. No comment was written or support, you know, there's no written comment, there was no opportunity to engage the union. They never contacted me up until this point. So I encourage them in future projects, if they'd like to, like, my number's posted publicly on these approval or these applications, so I encourage them to, to contact me.
Okay. Well, I know they were here last week registering comments as well of concerns, so I'm not sure if you were monitoring.
No, I did. Yeah, I reached out to Zach and asked for a meeting and saw you Sunday, too. So yeah, I'm happy to have further discussions with them in the future, but.
Yeah, okay. I guess I'm, I mean, the specific comments you made, though, about 30, 40%, like, is that, that's your perception? Like, that's the difference in wages that you're paying the market rate folks versus the union folks?
Yeah, from my understanding, that doesn't include materials, it's just labor. So if you look at it over the entire project cost, I'm not saying the project goes up by 30 to 40%, but it does make a material impact that would require us to remove the affordable component, which is a tough balancing act, right? Without any subsidy, these are all privately financed, de-restricted. It's very difficult. And so I don't think it's 6%. It's not 30 to 40% on the entire project, but it does make a material impact to the, to the project.
Yeah, no, I get it, and I hear what you're saying in terms of if you make us do this, then we'll take out the affordable unit. So you're not making any profit on this project, then?
Yeah, of course. I mean, if the project's successful, we're the last ones to get paid as the owner. I mean, that's the risk that you take. A lot of our workers, you know, they don't put up a lot of capital upfront, right? We hire them, and so they're showing up to do a great job, and they do good work. Again, I've worked shoulder to shoulder with a lot of these people. Yeah, so we're, yeah, I mean, kind of lost my train of thought there. My ADHD is firing all cylinders right now, so.
That's okay. It's a pretty overstimulating room. So I guess, I guess part of my commentary here to start is just that I don't like the analogy that, like, well, if you make us do that, then we're going to take away this. Because I think it's, it's without showing us, the performers, without showing us, like, really what this means in terms of, like, I can't pay my staff. I mean, obviously, I know you need to make, you need to make a salary, you need to have, like, some level of return. I get that. I'm not totally immune to the reality of business. But I do think that, like, without that transparency piece, when people say, well, if you do this, then I'm going to take away affordable housing, it feels like you're asking me to choose between children.
I'm not trying to threaten that we're taking away. I'm just saying feasibly, like, there's a feasibility issue, right? I mean, we want to provide affordable housing. We would love to pay workers more, right? But the market dictates what our wages will be. Yeah, and so, yeah, I don't really have much else to say beyond that. I mean, we try to use union labor as where we can and where the market will bear it. And, and in this market where we're not receiving any subsidy to provide these 20% of the units, there's not much I can do. I can't fight market forces. You know, I've gone with the salary for about three years. Okay, that's hard. Okay? And these are the risks that we take. I have lots of capital tied up in these projects personally, and we're doing it because we want to solve a problem. I can't solve every problem. In terms of our pro forma, I have offered to open that up to your office to show you exactly how much money we make and how the whole thing works, and really the risks that we take. And it is a very scary business. It's a very scary time to raise capital, and there's only so much we can do. I mean, it can only put out so many fires, so. I do welcome the engagement. I love policy discussions, as you probably have seen on my Twitter page. But yeah, there's only, you know, so much that we can do right now.
No, I appreciate that. I knew that you'd offer the pro forma for the subset, for the prevailing wage homeless shelter housing, but I wasn't, hadn't heard about this one.
Happy to go behind closed doors and show you how real estate financing works in development. I'm very, I'd love to democratize it. It is something that more people need to do. We need more housing.
Yeah, you're actually the first market rate developer to take me up on that request, so I want to give you kudos for that. I've been asking that question for the last couple of years, show me the numbers, so that we can have that conversation. I appreciate that. I guess then my final question is, have you picked a contractor for this project already?
Yeah, so it's J. Villa Builders. He built the Eleanor in H16, so he's directed about $75 million of investment in your district, including the holiday and redevelopment. He's acting as the owner's rep on that, as RCP, as the builder. He's also worked with Tricorp in affordable housing, is a very good contractor, three generations of GC experience, 20 years of work specifically on his own. So yeah, he's very qualified, and we treat our workers really well. That's how you get a good product. We're into win-win-wins, so you have to treat your workers well, you have to make sure that they're getting a fair wage, and also, if you work over 30 hours full-time, I think the federal government mandates health benefits. I would love to see more training programs available. I think the unions do a great job of training them. We're not anti-union, and we're not anti-labor.
I appreciate that. Has your contractor told you the salaries that their workers will be paid? I'm assuming that's a part of their bin.
Yeah, and I've also, again, I know a lot of these subs, I've worked with them personally, so I know exactly, like, our roofer, entry-level roofing job makes $25 an hour, that's $50,000. They can afford these units that we're, that we're providing. And we're committed to providing hundreds of these privately financed affordable housing units, not just these eight. This is definitely a model that we want to replicate with these workers. They do good work, and they get paid really well.
Okay, well, I mean, my own personal feelings are, I mean, I was troubled by the Business Journal comments that I saw. This was, yeah, it was, it was disturbing because it feels like, you know, no, we shouldn't be planning on, we can't pay workers prevailing wages in order to make projects pencil. And it's just unfortunate that this happens, like, you're the front one that come forward now with this project that is, in its essence, a good project. Like, it's affordable housing, it's in the central city, it's checking all of the boxes, and then we get to this last one. And for me, I know that that's not a city requirement right now, and so, like, that's why I appreciate that you've gotten to this point in the process without having run those numbers, without that expectation. And so it wouldn't necessarily be fair to say you have to do this out the gate, and I don't know where my colleagues fall on this. I do think that's a policy conversation I want to have, is requiring that as a city moving forward, so that developers have that expectation going into projects. But in this specific case, I just, I'm going to listen to my colleagues discuss right now. I'm feeling a certain kind of way, and I appreciate your intention with this project and with the eight units. It's just I'm, I'm bothered by the lack of commitment to figure out a way to do the affordable housing with the, the strong jobs. Because as we're saying, you know, yes, we need the affordable units, but part of the reason we need the affordable units is because people aren't making enough money to afford market rent. And so it does feel a little bit like we're doing this back and forth of, like, $50,000 can't afford an apartment in Midtown right now. Maybe they can get into one of the, they can afford to one of the eight, but that's eight units, right? And so it's, we kind of end up doing this self-representing cycle where we say, well, we need more affordable units because people can't afford market rate, and then we keep paying people money that they can't afford market rate with. And so you see the pickle that we're in with this conversation.
This financing is actually tied to our 30-unit Studio 30 project. They're sisters in terms of, they're in the same LLC, so that's 30 units of additional privately financed affordable housing that we're breaking ground on next week. So we're committed to bringing thousands of these units. Yeah, I can't say more beyond that.
Okay. I'm happy to stop grilling you on this. Thank you.
I welcome it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan, then I've got a comment.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Thank, I don't think I have any questions with you. Questions of staff, is there any public money that we've contributed to this project?
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Carla Felix, senior planner, community development. We are not aware of any public funds for this development.
And then, thank you, to our city attorney, does this city at this point have any legal ability to require prevailing wage and apprenticeship requirement or healthcare on this project?
No, councilmember does not.
So even if we said this is what we want, we actually don't have any legal ability to do that?
You do not.
We would exposing the city to liability.
Well, you definitely would be going outside of what's in front of you, which is approval on a land use project.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because I think it's important for legal parameters. I am supportive of projects. I, I support our carpenters making living wages, but I also believe in going within the law, and it's a larger policy development. Councilmember Valenzuela, would it make you more comfortable if I opened and closed this, so you did not have to move it? Then I will, I will make a motion to open and close the public hearing on this project.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll make a comment, and I'll turn it over to the vice mayor. He can close. The council, of course, would have the ability to turn down the project. That would be the way to, to, to make the statement, I'm strongly in support of the project. I love the carpenters, have worked with you, and support your direction very, very strongly. But when a private developer builds affordable housing in this town without subsidy, without subsidy, and there is no record of wage violation with this particular developer, I, we, we have to build more housing. Now, here's the unspoken part of this whole thing. There is a way to bridge this gap, and we may have an opportunity in the year ahead, and certainly as we look towards the 2024 ballot, as a number of people and organizations are looking at potential ballot measures around transportation and housing. We need a, we need a robust housing trust fund in this city. We talk about it all the time. We, we help subsidize these kinds of projects for developers like Mr. Vicnokier or others who can't do it without a subsidy. You put that public subsidy in, and all of a sudden you have the combination, because then you're paling, paying prevailing wages. And it's reasonable to talk about other benefits and working conditions, because we've got skin in the game. And with that public subsidy, we can essentially sort of pay for the difference. That's, I think, where we want to head here as a city, but that's missing now. We've cobbled together housing trust fund dollars over the course of the years, and we've subsidized some projects that have paid prevailing wage. But until we get there, I think it would send the wrong signal to say, no, you can't, you can't build more affordable housing in our city. But there is a way to bridge that gap, and we, and we ought to head in that direction. I know Councilmember Valenzuela has been having a number of conversations. I know I've been having conversations, others have, about how we put together transportation, housing, and, and labor protection. Well, it's going to require a combination of things, including more public resources dedicated towards housing. For this project, we ought to say yes. We need this. Councilmember Geta, vice mayor Geta?
Yeah, I have just one quick question for the applicant here. And, you know, and as he walks up, you know, first of all, I agree here, I, you know, as he walks up, you know, first of all, I agree here. I support our local carpenters. I think the stories speak for themselves about the ability for people to pull themselves up through hard work and being able to earn a wage where they can provide longevity and end the cycle of poverty that some of them may have faced. So for me, those are, those are critical issues. And so, and salaries play a big part of it. Obviously, you know, one of the things that we hear often is access to healthcare, making sure that, that you're working with subcontractors that have access to healthcare. That, that provides a stronger workforce.
Absolutely.
So for me, those are critical, key points there. And so, one, you know, did you, you mentioned that you actually reached out to the carpenters? Or did you know that there was an issue?
No, until last week. Until, yeah, I couldn't say.
Will you be willing to meet with the, the union?
Yeah, I love meeting with them. Yeah, absolutely.
Even on this project, if this project is approved?
This project, this project's a little baked, as they say. Yeah. This, it would have been a good time to reach out about six months ago, eight months ago. There's not much we can do, even if we were sitting down. But I love the engagement. So I welcome it.
You can't, you can't make up time. I acknowledge that. But you can control what you do in the future. And so I, for me, I think that's an important aspect here. And given our, our four-hour meeting we had earlier today about the lack of actual, actual units that we need to get online, it also, it puts us in a precarious position to, to look at this project, because we should have started building these units not today, but years ago. And, and we can fault councils in the past or whatnot for not building more multifamily housing in the 90s or in the 80s when we needed them. But we're here today. So if, with your, if you're committed to speak with them on this project, not only that, but in future projects, then, Mr. Mayor, I feel also in the same circumstance here that we need to be able to try to get as many projects online, particularly when, in this one, we're not actually using any of our city funding for other, you know, subsidized projects that we, that we have. So, but that's, that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Valenzuela, do you want to conclude? We've got a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'll just make some comments. I think part of what I would like to see change is developers taking it on themselves to talk to unions. I don't think that unions are clairvoyant. I don't think they know when you're thinking of plans. And I wish, and I'd like to send a message that when you're thinking of your plans, this should be something that is done as development in general, that you should be trying to figure out if there's a partnership there, if we can make this pencil, working with people to pay prevailing wages and to ensure those standards are there. That's the paradigm shift that I think we need to start pushing for as a city, is, is how do we build in that triple bottom line at the beginning, rather than having this conversation so late in the game? I wish that this wasn't the model that we were all pointing to. I wish this was just a project and that we weren't talking about this, like, it's creating this new model. Because what really bothers me is that now we're sending a policy statement, that this can't work if we're doing prevailing wage. And, and that's the part that I'm having trouble separating from in my mind, is that saying yes to this project right now, it feels like, like you personally have put yourself out there making these statements about labor and these projects. And now, it feels like that's the conversation that I'm having in my head, if this had just been an item. And I don't, I'm not asking you the question, John. I'm just making my own statement before we vote here today. I guess I just, if it hadn't been, become this bigger policy discussion, then maybe we could have just had this offline discussion with the carpenters, and maybe it could have been just something we fixed. But now this is becoming, everybody's looking at this project and saying, this is the model for how we're going to build affordable housing without subsidies. And I'm not comfortable saying that that can only happen if we're not paying the workers a wage that they can afford to live in the units in this region. I just am not. And I will just say to the people who are talking about policy of the council and stuff, that this is something that we intend to bring forward. And this is a conversation that we are having, because I don't like the fact that we're continuing to barter against our best interests for the sake of projects. I can't get past the fact that those eight units are immediately going to fill up, because we had 9,000 people apply for 400 units at Mary Sol Village. 9,000 households applied for 400 affordable units. So these eight units are fantastic, but that's not going to be a major, like, we need to figure out how to solve this issue at the root, which means doing it in a way that also addresses the root issue for why those affordable units are necessary. So, so I'm not going to be going up and supporting this project tonight. And those are the reasons why. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say very quickly, Councilmember Valenzuela, that I heard the offer to take a look at the pro forma. And if, if it's okay with you, I'd like to do that with you in your office in order to turn it into a learning opportunity for me, so I can see how this pencils out for other developers as well. So I just want to offer that. And if, if, if you don't want to go through that, I'd like to at least go through it myself. Okay?
Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, this is a tough situation we're in. You have a private entity investing. And, you know, I completely hear and I understand and I agree with the carpenters' union's frustration. Because as I'm sitting here, I'm a bit frustrated because right now in my district, we have a project that is all affordable housing, funding through state from the city. And last week, I found out that they're going with non-union labor. And when they were here in this city, in front of us, proposing that project, I asked them, I said, is this project going to be union? And they went back and forth, and they said that they will definitely sit down and talk with contractors and look into union labor. And to find out that they didn't. So when we talk policy, I think we need to be kind of clear that if there's any subsidy that's going from us or taxpayers to a project, then that, that conversation needs to be really more detailed discussed. Because a project, and the project that I'm referring to, I know what the developer's making under nonprofit umbrella, which is approximately $9 million, which is considered fees. They call it fees. So I hear you. I feel you. However, this project is a little bit different, that one. That one has our, your tax money is funding that project. So that's why I have an issue with that project being non-union. But on this one, you know, it's private investment, and we don't really have that much to force. But it's the other project that's kind of getting to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I echo a lot of the concerns that Councilmember Valenzuela shared, and especially the part around, you know, this being a potential model. I, you will almost never hear me oppose any affordable housing development in our city. I, it's, if our discussion, our 4.5-hour-long discussion earlier on homelessness was any indication of our desperate need for affordable housing, like, it's now. And we ought to do a lot more of it. However, we need a model that includes having people being able to afford the housing that they're building in our city. We need a model where, you know, when this recent report that just came out on homelessness from UCSF, one of the key underlying factors that we know around homelessness is around economic conditions, right? And that means like, can people afford to pay rent? Can people afford to pay groceries and do everything else that they need to do? And that's one of the fragile safety net that we, we have or lack thereof in our city. And so I share, I echo your concerns. And, and really, I hear you, carpenters, and would love to see future conversations on projects as well, as early as possible. I think that that's, you know, as we have innovative ideas and how to build this housing, I want to see partnership. Because, you know, I, you know, I'll say it from the dice, we're a union town. We just are. And we support, we support workers. And so, so I'd love to see those partnerships. And yeah, so I just wanted to register my comments.
I'm, I'm going to make one more comment, just to reiterate, because I think it's so important and respect everyone's opinion and vote, but I want to send my signal, which is that there is a way, and that is for the public to pay the wage differential. That's what should be happening here. We don't have that money now, but we can get that money. And so you want to talk about a model and precedent going forward, that's the three-part model, is a nonprofit or a for-profit developer, organize labor and working people, and the public sector participating in order to make sure is that all boats rise together. That, that just isn't the circumstance of this case, of this situation. This, we're not setting a model or a precedent. It's, we always, we've set this principle in so many other circumstances, whether it's community benefits agreements with Aggie Square, or, or the community benefits agreement around the arena, the Golden One Center, where there is a significant public benefit, we have the right to set conditions that not only protect working people, but that address impacts on neighborhoods and everything else. Where it's privately financed, and where it is a good, a good thing, something that we need, then that's this particular project. But it doesn't have to be every project, especially if we prioritize funding affordable housing through, through our decision-making here, which we can do. And the voters can do in 2024, as we think about a partnership going to the ballot. All right. We do have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion was made by Councilmember Kaplan and a second by Laloe, Mr. Laloe, to open and close the public hearing and move the item forward. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Laloe.
Aye.
Talamontes.
Abstain.
Valenzuela.
Abstain.
Maple.
Abstain.
Geta.
Aye.
Jennings.
Yes.
Vang.
Abstain.
Steinberg.
Yes. That passes five or six?
Six.
Six. No, it's, it's five. Five yes, four abstentions. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the next item. Item 37.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam City Clerk, and councilmembers. My name is Thomas Adams with Engineering Service Division of the Public Works Department. The item before you is a request to vacate two portions of a public roadway easement. This request is to vacate two portions of a public roadway easement adjacent to a city on parcel located at the northeast, northeast corner of Fair Oaks Boulevard at Howe Avenue. This request is to clean up excessive easements that encumber the property and are not necessary for present or prospective use for the purpose of sale. The areas requested, requested for vacation are in excess, and vacating the roughly 5,000 square feet of roadway easement will not affect the public access to the adjacent roadway or sidewalk areas. City staff along with various agencies support this vacation request with the reservation of a public service easement to maintain and for maintenance of the existing utility facilities. This action recommended with this request is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 General Plan, as in, and is in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. Staff will have, answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
All right. With your public testimony?
I have no public testimony on this item.
Who's the member here? This is Councilmember Kaplan, right? No?
Geta.
Yeah, where am I here? I was 37, sorry. I was looking at 38. 37. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose abstain. That passes unanimously. Item 39.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Leslie Curry, the Receivables and Collections Supervisor, appearing on behalf of the Finance Department, Revenue Department, and Collections. We are appearing this evening to ask for council to approve and adopt a resolution to allow the city to move forward with a special assessment for unpaid sidewalk repair fees billed in 2022, and in some cases, for defaulted payment plans from 2021.
Yes. Yes, of course. Yes, yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on this item.
Okay, who wants to move this?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have some comments on this one.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, so I understand, this has been a controversial issue. And it goes back to one of California's earlier governors, to put it that way. That's, and, and it's one of these issues that, that's a difficult one, because, one, the cost to some of the folks that have to repair the sidewalks can be enormous. And enormous. And I've looked at some of these, some of these companies, some of these are, are trusts and holding companies that aren't paying their, their fair share, and they should be responsible for their sidewalk. And so I don't want to delay this item here, because I even had my neighbor who was walking her dogs tripped on a sidewalk and busted her teeth out, and was completely knocked unconscious. And so I understand the necessity and the importance of making sure that we, as a city, as soon as we're notified and understand that there's a sidewalk, that there's an issue, that we, that we respond to that. But I do have a concern, and I've always had a concern, about how, particularly in areas, and if you look at the, the, you know, where the sidewalks are on this, they're in the older parts of our city, and they tend to be in areas that are much more middle to low-income, older parts of our city. And the newer parts of our city don't have this issue, because they're built-out communities, they're built with La Russ fees and other fees that, that cover that. But I do have a, of a concern that we haven't figured out the nut to crack on this policy. I've heard that Oakland has a, has had a, some form of policy on this. So I would like, Mr. City Manager, he's not here, so I'm going to ask, or I see some of our assistant city managers back there and staff, as part of the motion with this item, to come back and look at, look at other cities that have dealt with sidewalk issues, and figure out how do we, how do we address both the, the cost to those who, this is a difficult burden to bear. The other, the other, that's one part of direction. The second, I want to make sure that everyone who is on this list here gets notified, either through writing or through a letter, about the city's payment program process. And I believe it's income-based, so it's, it'll address those who are the, frankly, slumlord delinquents who aren't fixing their sidewalk versus those who are our seniors, and many of them that I've known, who, you know, a lot, a lot of, you know, folks in, in my district who've owned their homes since the 50s. And now they're on a fixed income, can't afford to fix the sidewalk, the sidewalks are out of repair. I want to make sure we figure out that, that our revenue department proactively go out there, not wait for them, because when they get these notices from code enforcement, they're very, they're, they're very daunting and traumatizing. And they can be quite intimidating and stressful. And many times, what, what happens is, and I've heard this from some of the residents, is they're so afraid of the process that they, they just put it away. And then they get to this point where they're in these fees and these fines. So let me reiterate my motion here. Let's move to, open and close the public here and move the item with two directions. One, to look at what other city policies, specifically, I heard that Oakland had a, had one that I haven't researched, but, and then two, that the city proactively send a notification now to those folks here about the installment and payment program or assistance that the city may have on this. With that...
May I address that?
Yes.
Currently, every billing that goes out, the original billing goes out, let me start with back. Every notice that goes out offers a payment plan option, even from the beginning notices to repair. When the billings go out, another notice is inserted with the billing, offering a payment plan. Each of our billings and our statements go out with an offer of a payment plan. So we do this continually through the billing process. When we come down to our notification for this lien process, we again, offer them a payment plan and/or a hearing if they dispute the billing. So they have, and many, many opportunities to address it, call us. And we try and work with every constituent on a payment plan. And we do them on a case-by-case basis, based on their income, their circumstances, their household needs.
Thank you, Leslie. I understand that. Okay. And I've read the notices before, and we had an entire meeting in front of a busted sidewalk on 13th Avenue in Tahoe Park. And I understand. And this is nothing on you. And I actually appreciate our code officers and the inspectors that went out there, because it was one-on-one with the inspectors and everyone talking about this issue. Again, what I would like is that when this council votes on these final fees and ordinances here, that we do that final notice. And again, because what happens, and I understand you insert that in there, but as soon as they get to the first few sentences, those, the, whether we intend to or not... or not, those notices are, come across as, as, very abrasive, whether we intend to or not. It's just the law, so.
I'll second your-
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. So that, that's my request. That's my direction. But thank you, Leslie, for that.
Thank you.
Okay. It's here from other members here. I've got Councilmember Valenzuela and Jennings.
Yes, I want to support the motion, especially to look at other city policies. It's really a funding priority issue, right? I mean, we could allocate funding to help repair the sidewalks, or, you know, we could look at other cities' policies, but it is something that is impacting. I mean, I have homes in my district that were built in, like, a hundred years ago, over a hundred years ago. And so you can imagine the number of sidewalk issues and the amount of problem-solving that happens in my neighborhood. I do want to add an important nuance, though, to the motion, if that's okay, Vice Mayor, because I've had some, some constituents ask, and I think it's a fair question, that they're like, what if the damage is caused by city trees? Like, the city comes through and plants these trees in the right-of-way strip between the sidewalk and the street, and if that tree then causes damage to the sidewalk, I can't cut down the tree because it's protected, you know, it's a city tree. So like, now I'm stuck paying for these sidewalk repairs. And I've had some people call me and basically say, you know, we told them when they planted that tree there, we were worried that it would impact the sidewalk, but the city decided to plant this tree there, and now we're stuck with this bill for the sidewalk repair. And so I think to add an additional, maybe nuanced to your two pieces of direction, I think if a city tree is causing the damage, that that might warrant a different policy approach from our perspective than if it's just normal wear and tear as a property owner. So just want to put that on the table as well.
No, that is, that, I concur with that. And that actually happened to be the reasons we were meeting. So, the, the last thing I'll add, just to, to, no, go ahead. I have a couple other colleagues here, but then I have something to close off with, Mr. Mayor.
Leslie, I think I'm next.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand the numbers that I'm looking at. There were one hundred and fifty-eight assessments that were mailed out, according to the record I'm looking at.
That's correct.
And of those one hundred and thirty-two are referred to for special assessment.
That's correct.
Which means they did not respond, and they haven't set up a payment plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I think when I look at that number, that's a very large number, and to Vice Mayor's point, when people see this, depending on their age and their income, the question is, is are they not responding because they don't feel like they have enough information? I know personally that you, when you send this out, I know personally that the information comes with a payment plan that's available. But when you see the amount, and like I say, I say, I know this personally, when you see the amount, sometimes it causes you not to respond because you can't afford that amount. So I guess my question would be, is there any other way to communicate with the constituent when the bill first goes out? Is it only by mail, or does someone then follow up with a phone call to try to understand, is there a way that we can work with you to do a payment plan that you can afford?
Currently, when the billings go out from the Public Works Department, their phone number is listed on there. Their staff then refers them to my staff in the Revenue Division, and we discuss the payment plans with the constituents. And we go into great detail.
I think my question is, are we calling the constituent, or are we waiting on them to call us?
We're waiting on them to call us.
And, and, and I think, you know, in my years in, in corporate America, calling the constituent, especially one that's afraid of the amount, and not really understanding the payment repayment plan, might be the best way of getting their numbers up of one hundred and thirty-two referred to as special, for special assistance. I mean, that's like over ninety percent of the people who didn't respond. I don't know, if I go back historically and look at that over the years, I would assume that the numbers are the same. So if you're getting lack of response, the process that we're using needs to be re-engineered. And that's the only thing I'm saying to you, because Councilmember Garrett is right, Vice Mayor is right, in that a lot of these people who own these homes, who are in these older houses, they're the ones that are not looking at the technology, they're not looking to make a phone call, they're not look, they hope this thing goes away, because it's the first time they've seen it. And so I saw the process just recently, because I got two of them mailed to my house. And so I'm looking at the amount myself, and, and now going through the process of making that big decision as to whether or not I'm gonna let the city do it and go work on a payment plan, or I'm gonna do it. So I understand it clearly, but I don't think I'm the same age as many of them who are getting this, this information. So my, my direction, City Manager, is I think we need to look at this and see, over the years, has this number remained this high? Out of the one fifty-eight, are one hundred and thirty-two not responding, and why are they not responding? And let's get some more information. It might be a study opportunity for us to learn something and re-engineer the process. So no, no disrespect to what you're doing, I'm just saying I think there's a message here that we're not seeing.
Mr. City Manager-
Yeah, I think what would be good, I'm sorry I missed the beginning part of the questions here, but what we can do is provide a report back to this council on the sidewalk repair policy and why, and there's some legal ramifications and notifications of folks. You know, the property owners, sometimes they're not one in the same. So trying to call somebody and reach the actual property owner and provide sufficient notice, that, that could be, you know, so we'll, we'll pull this all together and send this out to the council. And if, if it's something that we can do, we absolutely will explore that. We'll look at the other cities and what policies they have, but I think Councilmember Valenzuela is absolutely right. It's a function of funding. I mean, the way that we have it set up, it's, it's one hundred percent funding. If this council wants to make this another one of the priorities that we kind of transition what our policy is, we'll put a price tag on it, and you'll have an opportunity to take a look at it and see what that is.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And, and, you know, again, let me, oh, and then I just wanted to say that. I did get a notification from our Assistant City Manager that they are looking at this through the fines and fee process as well, too. So appreciate that. But Leslie, I, first, I just want to say, you know, I, I've talked to some of my constituents who've worked with the Revenue Department, and they've had nothing but very positive things to say. And when they do get on the phone with you, they're very appreciative, it helped them understand the, the circumstance. They may not be happy, happy with the outcome, but at least they're very appreciative of, of the tone and the, the conversation they've had with, with you and your team. And so, one, I want to say thank you to that. And then the second piece, and I've, I've mentioned this to a couple of, of my fellow board members on the Sacramento Transportation Authority, or regional authority, and, and then for those that, that haven't here, maybe this is an opportunity just to lay it out there, but, you know, I, I also think that, you know, as we're investing in, in new tech transportation methods, you know, we're looking at EV vehicles and e-bikes and bike lanes, I don't want, I want to make sure we don't forget about old tech, you know, transportation, which is walking. And so I do think that a future transportation measure should look at some kind of subsidy for seniors in sidewalk, for sidewalk repair and whatnot, because walkability and thinking about how we build out communities and transportation for our aging youth and those that, and just for good public health, for getting people to walk around. You know, we don't have snow days, you know. We may have a hundred and nine days where we don't want to walk around, but we don't have snow days where we don't walk around. So, so with that, you know, those are, those conclude my comment. Mr. City Manager, the motion with direction, and I, I concur with Councilmember Valenzuela's change to the, to the direction, if that's okay with Councilmember Talamontes. Good. Madam Clerk, have any members of the public stand up to speak on this already?
There are no members of the public.
Good. Madam Clerk, do you mind, I guess, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, measure passes. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, the next item is item forty. Mr. Donato?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Aaron Donato. I am your Labor Relations Manager, and I'm here to discuss item number forty. And as I think most of you are aware, this item would normally be on consent. However, we're discussing executive-level summer salaries, and that has to be read into the public record pursuant to the California Government Code. Before we discuss this item, I have to correct a Scrivener's error in the documents that you have in front of you. Item number two, the attachment number two, is the Unrep Rezo, and on page ten of the Unrep Rezo, it says that the healthcare benefits are scheduled to end effective June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the city does not desire to terminate retiree healthcare benefits on that date. So we're requesting to update the resolution to June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. So that's a Scrivener's error that we're asking you to consider as an amendment. That said, this report is asking you to publicly approve the revised salary ranges for department heads that you discussed in closed session on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And the red line for that salary schedule is included in your packet. It is attachment number four, and particularly pages one through four of attachment number four. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I have two speakers. I have two speakers on this item. The first is Mac Worthy, and then Lambert Davis. Mr. Worthy.
All ways about the money. Now, you just gave your City Manager a raise for four hundred thousand dollars. What's wrong with these people getting a raise? I know when this city didn't even take our Sub Security with my father-in-law for his work here, streets- you are a disgrace. This stuff should even come in front of the people and waste their time, when you know that you are not justified. But what I heard here tonight about free enterprise, it's sad. It is sad that you are a communist. When you tell a man that he cannot use his own money to build apartments, what are you planning? What are you planning for com- I had a little big first mind. Actually, I look at my kids as a, a trust fund. You have a real revocable trust in South Carolina. This state here is subject to go to civil war at any time. We need to bring back Jimmy Hoffa to eliminate some of this garbage. Eliminate some of this garbage. We didn't go through this. Yes. Well, it's the people that come and bring this out here, that, oh, the ways and give a City Manager don't know is to ask for the holding ground, four hundred thousand dollars. It's sad. I, I don't know, people, where you gonna go from here? But I know, what I see is pretty, my vision is what I have experienced and heard here tonight, and last Tuesday. You all got a problem, and you subject to have some hell of a crime in this city. And I'm gonna stay right where I am, and I'm not gonna worry about it, because I'm gonna tell you the truth, and I'm gonna speak out against what you're doing to folks here. It's time out, people.
Next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert, and it was brought to my attention that this issue is about, and, and here we have another, what I consider another racist scandal inside the City Manager's office. Now, there, here's a, it was brought to my attention that there's someone, a black woman, working in that department that is doing more work than her counterparts, and she's not being paid like they are. And then I found out that the union, whatever that is down there, is not supporting her. So in this language, I don't see it there, but maybe it's in the report, she's being asked to get out of the union to get a raise. Who encourages a city employee to get outside the union that should be protecting her? I don't see that here tonight. And maybe she'll speak on it, but I was notified that that's the situation, and if that's the case, that's a violation of labor laws. Can't have a double standard because you don't like that particular person's race, and you give her all these assignments and different responsibilities and then don't pay her. This is not slavery. She earned her way there, and she has a degree. A lot of employees at City Hall don't have degrees, and they're making grand theft money. Pay that woman. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Okay, we do have a motion and a, a second?
We do not.
No, we don't. I know. I was just, I was just testing everybody here. It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Exactly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose abstain. All right, that passes.
Councilmember Talamontes, how do you vote on this item?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. That passes unanimously. We do have one final item tonight, and that is the cannabis cultivation ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lani Millsstein. Let's see, I'm Assistant City Manager, Acting Finance Director, and the Acting Manager of the Office of Cannabis Management due to some vacations, because this was carried over from last week. And I realize I'm standing between you and vacation, and I have six presenters I'm going to collaborate with and thirty-five slides. Just kidding. Okay. On August seventeenth-
Nice, nice.
On August seventeenth, in August seventeenth, council adopted current city code limiting residential cultivation to six plants, and created a penalty of five hundred dollars per plant in excess of that limit. Enforcement of the five hundred dollar per plant penalty for anything above the six-plant limit has effectively discouraged what was a burgeoning illegal residential cultivation industry. The proposed ordinance expands the definition of illegal cultivation to commercial and vacant lots, providing the ability to extend the five hundred dollar per plant penalty as a tool to reduce illegal cultivation in areas beyond our residential neighborhood. We do this simply by removing the word residential. Unregulated cultivation can create fire hazards through unpermitted electrical alterations, and can create odors that impact commercial neighbors and nearby communities. In addition, these unpermitted activities undercut and thereby damage the city's regulated cannabis marketplace by introducing cannabis that is untested for herbicides, pesticides, mold, and other contaminants that can harm those who use it, and creates an unfair competition with cannabis cultivated in, in the illegal market. On May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Law and Legislation Committee voted to forward the proposed ordinance to council for adoption. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance to provide additional tools to further our efforts to reduce illegal cannabis cultivation in the city. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available, should you have any questions.
Thank you. We do have one person testifying on this.
I have Lambert Davis online.
Yes, this is Lambert, and whenever it comes to cannabis, you can best believe I'm gonna comment on it. Now, they sent the core group, and I have no issue either way. I'm just for treating people equitably, as much as you talk about equity and diversity and inclusion. That's a mirage to me, unless you apply it to core. You have sent them through many hoops and barriers, and they met your barriers, and then you raised barriers, and it's put some of them out of business because of these barriers. There was a, a company that met every requirement, and they spent eighty thousand dollars, and then you shut them, you put more barriers on them. And there's an office inside the City Manager's office called the Office of Cannabis. If you have an office of something and a staff, you should never have these kind of problems, unless it's institutionalized and systemic, and that's what it is. So I hope core benefits and everybody else has to get behind them, because they've earned their way to where they are, and give them what they've earned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uncle Ted is the final speaker on this item.
Yeah, I, I think limiting the plants to six is a good idea. I think it's a little bit insane to have people growing a bunch of cannabis inside of a house. I was a cannabis cultivator myself, professionally, industrially, always legal. But when it comes to growing, and you have to take your neighbors into account, I think six is a relatively fair amount. It doesn't say anything about size. I think once you allow for people to grow more than that, you start to see things where people are stealing energy, or bothering their neighbors, or whatever. So I would like to see the enforcement of this actually happen, and go to other areas, commercial areas and whatnot, so you don't have people growing in storage units. It will stop cartels from bringing, you know, their- but I would like to see these cannabis companies that are making millions of dollars in revenue actually reinvest back in our communities. So what I would really, that's just my main objective. I would like to see whatever money is being used from these fines or the revenues is reinvested back into our communities, and it's illegal cannabis is helping our community. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Let's turn it over to my colleagues here. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be very clear on this item. It came to law and ledge, and I voted no, and I'll be voting no on this item before me. Not because of limiting six plants, not because of the good it does in stopping illegal grows, but one of the things we look at is equity and cannabis. Cannabis is not treated the same as alcohol. It's not regulated like our firearms. It is separate, and it is now legal. And when we talk about equity, some of the provisions in here will be used that will mostly affect brown and black families. So I just want to say specifically, the two sections I do have a problem with, because I think they will specifically target brown and black families. And I'm a little bit of a libertarian that if people want to make bad choices, we gotta let them make bad choices to a certain extent. So specifically, Section 8.132040, Section 2B1, which requires all cannabis to take place indoors within a single room. I understand cannabis. I understand cultivation. I understand the heat. I understand the requirement. If somebody wishes to waste their time and energy and do it in two rooms, who are we to say they should do it in two rooms when it's wasting their time and money? And then Section, same area, but Section 2B.5, that no cannabis at any stage of growth or cultivation and no evidence of cultivation occurring at the premises may be visible from the outside the room of the private residence or allowable structure in which cannabis is being cultivated. Now, no reasonable person is gonna put a plant in their window and say, hey, come steal it or break in. Now, if somebody wants to make that unwise move, who are we? I understand the public safety aspect of it, but we can't regulate the hate speech somebody puts in their window. So why are we regulating whether somebody could put a cannabis plant in their window? I think there's conversations of equity we need to have further as it relates to cannabis. So for that reason, I am voting no on this item.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm gonna move this item because I have brown and black families asking for this and Southeast Asian families who've been asking for this, and because it's led to, you know, unfortunately, we have some folks who make poor decisions, and it results in other people getting hurt. Now, this effort has actually been very positive. Where we've actually made significant changes. Where we moved the illegal marijuana growhouses that were being used and out of our city. And we still have some, but by and large, it's moved to other places who were putting their head in the sand. You know, some other cities like Elkhrove or the unincorporated county, but now they're following suit. And they're, and what we've also seen now is when these illicit operators decided to leave, going into, from gutting residential homes, they've gone in and used warehouses, which goes and makes it difficult for those who are following the legal process of getting the permits and retrofitting their buildings and reporting their product and using the track and trace, all of those things. So this is actually supported by not only law enforcement, the industry, community members. We've worked with entities like Habitat for Humanity to change this. And frankly, it's tightening up the issue. So I agree with Councilmember Jennings' comments last time, you know, where this was an enormous effort that we've moved on over the last few years. It's worked, and so if it ain't broke, don't fix it. In fact, let's expand it so that we can get at the commercial and the illegal warehouses where we have actual people who are following the rules and made it a significant industry for the city. So with that, I appreciate the comments from my colleague, but I have to specifically disagree in this and move the item. Mr. Mayor?
Very good. It's moved. Is your second?
That'll be all second.
Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it really, really brief, but this is common sense. It's applying the same rules that we're already applying to residential. And I did want to uplift something. One of the callers mentioned about our cannabis tax dollars going specifically to the communities, the city, the people of Sacramento passed measure all. And so that is allocating a percentage of our cannabis tax revenues to youth programs in our city. It's going directly back to the people. And so I think that that means that we need to make every effort that we can to protect the legal cannabis businesses that exist in our city, including our core applicants, who are working really, really hard to do everything the right way, to open up their businesses. And they're paying taxes, and they're making sure their product is texted, and they're doing everything. And I see one of our operators or industry workers in the crowd there. And so I think, you know, it's incumbent on us to make sure that we're doing right by them too, and so I support this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela?
I'd third it if I could, but I'm happy to move this forward. And just want to say, I mean, after a robust discussion at law and ledge, you know, we were one of the early cities to adopt, and we've learned a lot over the last many years. And one of the things was that sometimes people put things like plants in windows. And then when they get broken into, not only are they hurt, or their neighbors hurt, PD's going out, there's reports filed, there's draws on resources. So I see these requirements not just as things that are potentially enforceable, but also like guidelines to people. Because someone who's growing a plant at home might be there first time. They might not think about, hey, the best light's in my window. I'm gonna go stick it over here in my office and then say, oh, no, now people are gonna be driving down my street and break in. It just might not occur. And so we're putting these in place through lived, learned experience. And I just really want to applaud all the staff who I think did a really thoughtful and expeditious job bringing this forward so that we could make sure that they have the tools they need to keep doing the work that we need done in the community. So happy to support this item tonight.
All right. It has been moved. It's been seconded. Please call the rule.
Councilmember Kaplan? Councilmember Laloe? Councilmember Talamantes? Councilmember Valenzuela? Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bang? And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. That passes eight to one. That concludes the agenda for the evening. Are there council ideas and questions? Why don't we take those first? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, I am really excited to announce that the farmer's market is coming back to its original home under the WX Freeway. We are very, very excited, all of us. So it will be back on Sunday, July 9. It will resume every single Sunday. They will have the EBT there. They will do all of the amazing things they've done in years past. And we are just super excited that they're finally coming back now that the construction is done. And want to thank the city team and everybody who is involved in making sure that they could get back as soon as was feasible. So hope to see you all out there on Sunday, July 9.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to let the community know that Grand High School Swimming Pool will be open Monday through Fridays. And also Johnson Park Swimming Pool is open on the weekends. On Sundays, there's no fees for adults or children. So I know it's gonna be a hot summer, so I hope that I'll see you there and we can enjoy some nice, cool water. Thank you.
Councilmember Talamantes?
Tomorrow at 4 o'clock, I'm hosting a community meeting regarding Joshua's Homeless Hospice, Good Neighbor Policy at Rio Tiara Junior High School. And then this Friday, I'm going to both Girl State at Sac State and Girl Scouts, which I participated in both. So it's fun to see life come around full circle. And then Councilmember Jennings, I am joining you for your Fourth of July Parade. Last time I went, I think I bought 20 bags of candy. We ran out all of them. So now I know what to prepare for. So I'm looking forward to seeing you and your community, or our community, the Sacramento community out there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I wanted to invite folks out. The Folsom Boulevard Coalition Partners are having a community safety meeting over at the Power and Alliance this Wednesday at 6:30 PM. Folsom Boulevard Coalition Partners is a coalition of community neighbors who are looking at how do we improve and beautify Folsom Boulevard. Also want to invite folks out to the Annual College Glen Neighborhood Association National Night Out this Friday. You know, we start at 7:30 once it cools down a little bit. And for the, what do you call it, painting and balloons. In the past, we've been able to have a small petting zoo, working with our local departments here, the members of College Glen Neighborhood Association, for just a good time to meet all your neighbors. And that's gonna be held at Olivet Court and Hastings Court. So come out this Friday again with that. And I just want to thank all those involved, our parks folks and the board members of the College Glen Neighborhood Association. Oh, and also, I wanted to thank, I know we're having our annual press conference. Councilmember Jennings and I worked for many years on a fireworks ordinance to go after those who have been using illegal fireworks. Many times, those have led to fires on people's homes on top of their roofs. Particularly in our older communities, we have shingles, wood shingles still. And so we're gonna do some education about illegal fireworks and also the consequences of you using illegal fireworks and the new social host ordinance that we instituted the last couple of years, which, again, it's not only if you light the firework, but if you host an event where you're allowing that to happen, the property owner is also liable with a civil penalty for illegal fireworks. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for our fire marshal for helping with that effort. And also Lee Miller from the Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association, who's been organizing a lot of folks on fireworks safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Maple?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Lots of exciting things going on. So tomorrow morning, the Sacramento Native American Health Center, or SNAK, will be doing a ribbon cutting of their new facility on Florin Road. So we're very excited to welcome them to South Sacramento. That'll be at 9 AM. And it will feature our Congresswoman Doris Matsui, along with, it sounds like, many of my colleagues, which I'm very excited to have you there and have this new center in South Sacramento. On Thursday evening at 6 PM, we are going to be hosting through District 5 a Meet Your Commissioners Day. So we're gonna be having all of our District 5 commissioners come out to the Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center on Franklin Boulevard and just have an opportunity for the community to come out and meet them, talk with them, express their vision and concerns. So please do come on down. I'll also be at the Girl Scout Day, it sounds like, with my colleague Karina Talamantes at the Capitol. And then if you want to see me dressed up in my best gear for Fourth of July, come join us for the Hollywood Park Neighborhood Association Parade, leading from Hollywood Park Elementary on the Fourth of July morning. So I can send some details to you. Please join. I will be very silly in my Lady Liberty costume. Thank you.
Good word to that. Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. Councilwoman Maple already announced one of them, so I'm excited about the Sacramento Native American Health Center on Florin Road. I know it was officially in District 8, and now it's officially in District 5. So really excited about the ribbon cutting tomorrow. It's a very much needed clinic in South Sacramento. So really excited about that. So thank you, Councilwoman Maple, for announcing that. And then just wanted to remind folks, because we're not gonna have a council meeting literally until the end of July, right? Or was it August? Yeah, it's gonna be a while, July. So I just wanted to do a quick announcement. Our quarterly team-up to cleanup is happening on July 7. 8:30 is check-in. 9 o'clock. And then we'll start, we'll be meeting at Susan B. Anthony Elementary. We'll provide all of the equipments needed to clean up the neighborhood, so join us if you can. And then on July 14, I just wanted to let you know that there'll be the first Annual Stephon Clark Minority Mental Health Expo, happening from 1 to 6 o'clock at Mack Road Valley High Community Center. It's a day full of education, resources, inspiration, a lot of great community vendors and resources, but really bringing awareness to the unique struggles that our Black, Brown, Indigenous communities are facing in regards to mental health. So really encouraging a lot of folks to join us on July 14. And then lastly, I always put a plug in for this, but every Monday at 9 o'clock, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we do senior walks on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays at the Penelope Community Center. And then every Monday, I am there, Mondays with my, so come join us. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned before, the annual Fourth of July Parade will take place at that time of the year, and it'll take place Pocket Green Haven. It will be Tuesday, July the 4th, of course. And we're once again excited to present this wonderful neighborhood tradition that has gone on for far more years than I know. The parade will begin promptly at 10 AM. I'm going to be glad to see my colleagues who are going to be there with me. I also would like to let you know that Congresswoman Doris Matsui called today and asked to make sure that she would be in the parade, so we're excited to have her there as well. So it's gonna be a good time for our kids and for our adults. We're gonna be there with classic cars, with floats, with parades, with all kinds of marching bands, from the Kennedy High School marching band. So it's gonna be a good time, and I think you'll enjoy it. I'm told that it's the largest Fourth of July Parade in the city of Sacramento. And so we're gonna prove that to be true if it's not true, because I just told you that that's what it is. Also invite you to join us for our Jazz in July series. Every Friday, we have a jazz concert. We've been doing this for a number of years. It's gonna be at Marriott Park on July the 7th at 5 PM, at Land Park Panhandle on the 14th of July at 5 PM, at Goshabend Park on the 21st at 5 PM, and at Bell Coolidge on the 28th at 5 PM. All these events are free, and there should be food trucks out there, so you have something to eat. Bring your blanket, bring your chairs, and come out for a good evening of jazz and getting to meet some incredible people. If I didn't give you enough information, you can visit my social media page for more information about all the concerts, as well as the Fourth of July Parade. So we look forward to seeing you there, having a great time in the month of July.
Very good. Thank you. Lots going on in the city and the neighborhood this summer, which is just great. All right. Are there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I have 16 speakers. The first is Deborah Cassia. Mike Brookins, then Samuel. Is Deborah here? Mike Brookins? It's your turn to present. So this is public comment from Anderson on the agenda. Mike Brookins, then Samuel, then Mac Worthy, then Crystal Sanchez. Yes, Mayor. I have 16 speakers. The first is Deborah Cassia. Mike Brookins, then Samuel. Is Deborah here? Mike Brookins? It's your turn to present. So this is public comment from Anderson on the agenda. Mike Brookins, then Samuel, then Mac Worthy, then Crystal Sanchez.
District 3, that's where we're from. And we'll make this quick, and this was in a gin of that, I applaud you guys for having the "ooh" to go through all that. You know, I turned around and it was like, oh, my God.
Well, thank you.
Basically, believe it or not, you are saving the best- If there's anyone after me? For last.
It's good news.
It's very good news. These two young ladies that you see here, and my wife, and this is another, the mother, obviously, of the USA-
Acrobatic.
Acrobatic Gymnastics Nationals winners, right here from Sacramento. They have the name to the, the USA gymnastics team has named them to the International Pan-American Team. In December, they go to Chile, South America, in competition, right here from Sacramento. This is a picture of them on the podium in Tulsa, Oklahoma, where they just won. Wow, look at that. Some of you might remember me. I know Daryl Steinberg, Mayor, Jennings. And some of you are probably too new. When we came here for our brother, Robert Brookins. So when you hear that name, Brookins, you're going, oh, okay. Well, this is the next generation of Brookins, along with her beautiful teammate, who says, well, you guys are getting old, move over, let us do what we need to do now. So they went and won the Nationals. Now you're looking at world. You're looking at something so obvious. Do you have time for that video?
Probably.
Tell the guys to wake up. It's all just two minutes, if that. It's the winning, their winning routine that gave them the victory.
Okay, yes, of course, yes.
The timer's going. Three, two, one, you're out of here. But yes- The timer's going, three, two, one, you're out of here. But yes, you tell, I mean, all I could do at home was cry when they won. And here's the video, right after this. Watch this, you guys. So as you can see, as a proud father, and my wife, who was actually there, when you see them do those stands and they have to hold it, that, when I touch my daughter's arms, I'm going, girl, look at these guys that you're out there. And they're shy, but we had to let them know and show them, we need to speak with our councilwoman here, because one of the reasons we're here, the USA gymnastics team and Olympic Committee will take care of them. But we need to be there, because they, we have to have a parent there as well. And of course, she knows I'm trying to sneak in on the ride. We will get all the information to our councilwoman here. So, because we have a GoFundMe, so that we can have a family there to be there. This is like life-changing stuff.
Fantastic.
And the reason why she's so quiet, they're quiet and reserved, I said, there are millions of little girls who would love to be in your space right now. Embrace it. And let, and see, it's the city of Sacramento and all of the other regions around me that will see them and go, wow, there was a family there today at the gym who were going, what are they doing? I said, well, those are two of your little celebrities from winning the Nationals, and they didn't go do big things, but they're from here.
Yep.
So, um, ABC 10 on the morning show, they did a, an interview this morning.
That's wonderful. Well, listen, you, you, you brought so much joy to our meeting here tonight, and so much hope.
We could change the fabric.
And, and you know, we usually, we, we sometimes make a little exception to the rule, just when it involves kids like that, who are making us all so proud. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations, you guys. We do have to go on, okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samuel, then Mac Worthy.
This is Isabella.
Hi, Isabella.
And Liliana.
Thank you.
Leana. Leana.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Our next speaker is Samuel.
Who's next?
Is Samuel still here?
Samuel's not here.
Uh, Mac Worthy. Following Mr. Worthy is Crystal Sanchez.
How many times did Mr. Worthy testify tonight?
Satish Murphy.
How many times tonight?
Mr. Worthy.
There's a limit in the rules.
People, the last Tuesday, I've seen the worst thing I could see happen here. Now, we know, when I was growing up, it wasn't the LPT, it was the punk and the dyke. We saw alligator tears and everybody run down. Turn it over and see what it is. Wake up, people. You got 36 months, you're going to see that shit go. You're dastardly, go all the way to Chicago and get somebody in here that deals in homosexual. It's a disgrace. When I was growing up, like that little gal, alligator tears, old woman would give you $10 to whip her ass, she'd crawl like a snake. But anyway, you have gone against the police department. I'm going to stand with the police department regardless. But when we hear about, uh, free enterprise, that you want to get your money, the taxpayers' money, and tell them the truth, that's communist. Tell them the truth, that's communist. And you will sit here and won't tell people that you have a right to build your own castle. But yet, you'll, you'll go out there and twist the money of the taxpayers and will lie to them. You could have brought in Equity Trust with the taxpayers. Everybody would have got a few dollars. But you didn't, because you know you undermine and you will hawk that property for burns. That's that shit it is. Other countries, that's where China got so much power in Silicon, because you will hawk those, that property that the city owned in other countries. Uh, people, it, it's sad. It's sad to see that you cannot teach facts, because you are a liar and a sack of shit.
Next speaker is Crystal Sanchez.
My phone's literally at 1%, so hopefully you guys can see this really quickly dying. That's Holly Porter. And if you guys can get up there really quickly, she's a paraplegic, I mean, a quadriplegic who is in a hospital bed at Camp Resolution. Um, Camp Resolution was taken for Ms. Holly Porter. A question to you guys is if we can't house Holly, who has a disability, who has an income, who has a mother who's a caregiver, who is, her mother's waiting on income because they don't have housing, how can we house anybody who's homeless? I've sat on committees for the last five years, I've sat on committees, commissions, boards, done data, done research, sat on city, county, been everywhere, doing this, trying to figure out what the solution is to homelessness. It all says the same, every data, every report, everything we've done, it's fragmented, it's siloed, it's disjointed, no services that ever connect, no housing, no real-time services. But the law says to leave them alone. Yet we spend so much time figuring out how we can criminalize, ban, and disregard people. Ultimately, these policies you're creating bar people from housing. When they start getting misdemeanors and miss court, and they get warrants, um, it makes sense that we can't get them into housing. I want to let you know, we still have an active lawsuit against the city of Sacramento for the heat, um, from last year. Um, when we talk about temperatures, 100 degrees on asphalt is 170 degrees on the asphalt, I mean, 100 degrees outside, I mean. Inside these motorhomes that were given to Camp Resolution, while we're not ungrateful, there are 220 degrees inside those. We don't have electricity, we don't have power. Mayor, I did hear you earlier today bring up Camp Resolution and talk about the water and the power, and we do appreciate that. We're asking for the city to advocate for us, um, also for a meeting with the Water Board, because the other side of the property, we cannot move forward with. Therefore, we have about 30 residents on the other side who are going without. Um, it's time for the city to be progressive, like they claim, and start rattling the walls, shaking these windows, and creating change of homelessness and not be anti-homless.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Satish Murphy.
Just want to say, yeah.
Quickly, can I ask a clarification of record from the city attorney?
I think that's important, because I know I met with the folks earlier and talked to the city attorney, and we do have an update, so go ahead.
Um, yes, Mayor, counsel, I, um, spoke today with SHRA, who's actually the agency that's providing the housing. And, um, because it's a new, um, construction that's being finalized, I know that they are scheduling a, um, meeting tomorrow. The city, uh, building official expedited a temporary, uh, occupancy permit, so that, uh, you know, we could hopefully cut through some of that red tape. Um, I've been trying to keep you updated, all on what's going on, um, and working with our partner agency, SHRA, to make it happen as quickly as possible.
I understand Holly, Holly should be housed in the, in the house of her choice and the place of her choice within several days, no, no longer.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What about everybody else?
I understand.
Is Satish still here? No. Um, Carly Brannan, then Kevin Bolts?
So, something that Lambert keeps bringing up, our, our friend who makes the cheesecakes, you should really try his cheesecakes, they're really good. Um, where's the city manager's report? Perhaps if there was a city manager's report, he could relay what Susanna is doing over here with Holly's housing. Um, so on April, hold on, let me find my dates here. March. On March 24th of this year, the lease was signed for Camp Resolution. There was a separate document that, um, was signed, I, I believe by Susanna, saying that Holly would be housed within 45 days. Forty-five days from that date was May 8th of this year. Um, we are now at day 95, and there were, will still be several days until Holly is housed. I know that there is work being done on this. It's still unacceptable that it, it has been almost 100 days. It has been more than twice the amount of time that has been promised, and she is still not housed. She is a quadriplegic, living in a hospital bed in a tent. She survived the storms in January. She has survived the heat. The Sacramento Homeless Union had to put her in a hotel to, um, survive the most recent heat wave that we had. Uh, it's, this needs to be done now. Um, Katie Maple, make up your mind, you ran your campaign on demilitarizing the police. Your very first consequential vote was a yes on the rook. You then signed your name on a letter of dissent against the budget decision in light of the police portion of it. So I was like, oh, cool, maybe she's coming back. And then tonight, tonight, you again voted against your constituents' wishes and against your campaign promises by voting to continue law enforcement's involvement in responding to mental health episodes and to provide more unmarked vehicles. And as my comrade said-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kevin Bolts. Following Kevin is Susan Alpak. Please take your seat, your time has expired. Kevin Bolts, Susan Alpak.
Thank you, Carly. Kevin?
Kevin?
I feel like a magician, I made the mayor disappear. I want to say, free, free Palestine, and like the cheesecake man, I also support sending David Saban to jail. Uh, I heard Katie say that people should be afforded to buy the things they build with the labor. I want to point out, when that was the case in this country, the nominal tax rate was extremely high, and if you want to get back to that, you should read a book called Das Kapital. In my neighborhood, we've had racist, xenophobic, and transphobic flyers placed in people's driveways on Juneteenth. This is your team. This is the team of private capital. This is your team when you prioritize property and profits over people through your rhetoric, your actions, and your policies. This is your team when you defend a racist police force and gatekeep criticism of their fascism and Gestapo tendencies. This is your team when those same cops defend Proud Boys downtown, and you endorse a DA who chooses not to charge people who stab people at the Capitol because their Nazi beliefs. When you constantly attack the anti-fascists and anti-capitalists in your community, you end up on the side of Nazis and fascists, standing idly with a stupid sign, won't cut it. What the fuck happened outside? I've only been gone for two years, and Boulevard Park looks like San Francisco. You, Darryl Revere, went, was made the California's czar of homelessness, but I think he got confused and joined forces with it. Homelessness is up 69% since Darryl became mayor. He's such a douchebag, he made 69 less cool. And what do we have to look forward to in a long line of morally defunct mayors, geniuses like Maggie Crell, whose plan is to take one homeless person off the street each week in a time when six become homeless. Not only is this plan petulant and stupid, it's also ineffective. I have a much better plan. We should, every week, instead of taking someone off the street, place one elected Sacramento official into homelessness on the street until some of our fucking problems get answered. Feels like everyone up there's been sleeping too regularly, and maybe we should change that. Ask Darryl, I like pulling up to people's houses, I'll even drive to Granite Bay, with a PA system in the back of a truck. I'm back, bitches.
Next speaker is Susan Alpak. Is Susan, and then following Susan is Salisa Campos.
Okay, first of all, my name is Susan Alhak, it's pronounced A-L-H-A-Q-Q, it is an Arabic name. So let's get the first problems corrected. So I'm here, um, I want to say thank you, uh, Mayor Steinberg, for coming out to Camp Resolution the other day. Um, it was a, it was an intriguing situation. Um, you know, I hope he, you know, he seen what we, how we live, he seen how we reckon, you know, how we have our things in order, um, how many people we have on our camp. Now, as, um, as far as homelessness, the term, the term is, it came in, it came into public in 1830s, and it is current now. A period when the home, the home, that became a important part of low-income and middle-class families. Poverty, the term, is the most significant, uh, root, cause of homelessness. Three times the rent. I receive social security disability. I receive it every month. I get $1,200 a month. There ain't a way in hell I can afford rent, deposit, credit check, and still live what I have to have with my, my necessary needs for my household, which could sink a me and my husband. We've been homeless for 11 years. 11 years. I mean, it's official enough to be long enough, am I correct or wrong? But I want all of y'all to think about this, okay? While you, when you go home tonight, think about where the hell you would be at if you lost your job tonight. Think about where you would be at if you lost your job, your home, and you had nothing. Would you think one of your family members would take you in? Probably would, but they don't want to let you live on your couch for so long, then they have to tell you to get out. That's how we live, every day out here being homeless, okay? We need water. We need water resources at Camp Resolution, okay? We need, we need shade. I am one of the ones who live on the unpaid side, okay? I am a resident there, I am part of council there, but I live on the unpaid side. Do you not understand in the motorhome, it is at least 10 to 15 degrees hotter, hotter in a can than it is to be outside? Take that into credit. Will you guys go home tonight? Make sure you guys-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Salisa Campos. Thank you for your comments. Salisa Campos, less light than Robert Copeland.
Hi, my name's Salisa. Um, here again with this, um, buffoonery. Um, again, Holly needs housing. It's been way too long. Um, 100 days for a person in, in that position when it was promised 45 days, um, is just unacceptable, and I think you all know that, but clearly you still sleep well, so that's cool. Um, again, the unlocked cars, uh, more money for police to stalk and harass people in their communities. Again, um, after last week's embarrassing report, um, again, putting them on blast for their white supremacist behavior, um, their inability to understand how the Fourth Amendment works, um, the police chief is severely incompetent, and to allow them free rein to just sneak up on people is completely insane. Again, um, the affordable housing, we had a lot of discussion about, like, how great this person was going to be building this affordable housing with his own money, but it's literally eight spaces that anybody, any of the business owners who called in and were super excited for this affordable housing for their employees, like, even one cop, even at Milka, I'm sure they have more than eight employees, like, also probably won't be able to afford to live there. And the wages for the people that they're even paying to build it, I think low-income housing starts at like, you got to make like $40,000 a year to be able to live in low income, from what I understand. So that's like insane. Um, you guys are just full of bad decisions, and it's a shame that we have to keep coming here and reminding you, and a shame that you keep going home to sleep on these bad decisions and feeling okay with yourselves, and, um, how you keep destroying our community. Um, so yeah, get Holly a house, um, quit fucking around with cops. Katie, I don't know what the fuck your deal is, it's embarrassing. Um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Less light than Robert Copeland.
I'm, I'm here from the Sacramento Tenants Union, and, uh, just want to speak that, uh, our organization is very much in support of, uh, Camp Resolution. is very much in support of Camp Resolution. They, and we need you to understand, they need water out there for just like basic uses. And something I have to do about the fact that it's going to become very hot out there, and there needs to be a way to cool, cool the shelters down. And yeah, well, we've been told now that this time for sure Holly's gonna get housing. Well, eyes are on, eyes are on the city to see that that happens. And I would urge everyone of conscience in this city to be watching that. And let's make sure that Holly Porter, a quadriplegic woman, forced to live outside under these conditions, there was an agreement with the city that she would get housing. The city needs to honor that agreement. And please, I call upon, like I say, people of conscience in this city. If that, if that is not honored, we need to come back in numbers to demand that it happened. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland is the next speaker. And Crystal, I think you may have left your phone on the camera. Thank you, Heather.
I'd like to make a request of my city councilmember, Katie Valenzuela. Could you check in on all the wrecks or near wrecks on 18th and K? Because there's been a lot of them in that one block alone. And I don't know about the rest of the city, but 18th and K is bad about having wrecks or people almost getting wrecked. Also, tomorrow, I'll be at the state capitol tomorrow morning for some housing issues. So I'm doing my part. I say, one, two, three, where's the mayor? Why don't the rest of you do your part, except maybe Katie Valenzuela? She's doing part of her job while she's doing what she does on the city council. I applaud her. I'm voting for Katie Valenzuela. Get your act together, people. You've been here from Crystal Sanchez, you've been here from the homeless population in Sacramento. They need help right now, not next week, not next year. Also, I heard about, there's gonna be maybe a bond, a state bond for housing, about $20 billion by Assemblyman Buffy Wicks. I hope you heard of that. I mean, also, I heard last week that SHRA will be here in 25th of July to do a presentation about housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lambert Davis is our next speaker. We have four more speakers. Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert. First of all, I would like to thank whoever that was, the two people that spoke up on To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And that should send a notice to District 2's representation that you should be blowing our phone up. And the city manager's office with all those five divisions, you should be contacting us. Cheesecake appeals to most races and both sexes. That's why I went into business. As far as the Grant Pool, I thought I heard Monday through Friday, children need to swim in the pool on Saturday. So cut down on Monday and let the Del Paso Heights youth swim in that pool on Saturday. And then I'm gonna tell you why I give Minty Cuppy so much credit for being in the chamber during the pandemic. It says, and I was the one who brought it to their attention, I read where there are some city employees that are abusing working remotely. In Sunday's paper, Sacramento Bee, it says Sacramento terminates fire captain for abuse of working remotely. I'm not making these things up. Shout out to the Sacramento Bee. That's true journalism. And shout out to the Grant Drumline, I heard they landed in Europe. I don't know how they got there, they had a deficit before they left, but Mr. V made it happen. And shout out to the Grant Drumline, because they're in Europe, for some of you who don't know. And if you need to reach me, 370-9211, in the area code, you should know, I live here. But give Minty a raise and let her go home for three years hiatus so we can see how you do it with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Uncle Ted. Uncle Ted, if you'll unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can.
So I was calling to address the fact that we've had many decorum failures within this council. I was reading your guys' decorum rules that were established in March of 2023, and you guys have allowed people to completely disregard your rules. You appointed the city clerk as the decorum manager while the mayor sits by idly and allows his Antifa thugs to bully people out of their freedom of speech. You have a council member who allows herself to hang around racist Browns while at the same time calling everybody who's pro-white a racist. She goes and hangs out with the Brown Beret, who are openly anti-everybody. They support the taking over of California, and I think it's absolutely disgusting. Katie Valenzuela is a disgrace. She's a liar, she's a racist, just like Daryl Steinberg. And I think that you guys are an absolute group of liars. You're gonna be sued in time. FOIA requests are coming out, Public Records Acts are being conducted. You will be exposed, working with the communists, working with the Antifa thugs. Just want to let you guys know, you're on notice. We're gonna be holding you accountable. We will no longer allow for you guys to call people that are pro themselves racist or Nazis or bigots. It's absolutely just disgusting. So I just want to let you guys know, we will no longer be sitting by idly. I'm glad that you guys have to wait another month and a half to have a meeting so we can sit here and get back to activism and start addressing the issues within our community. You guys are being held hostage by a bunch of thugs demanding money from taxpayers, and we disagree with it. Hopefully, you guys wake up and realize how the economy works. Maybe you guys should go back to school and understand how things work, trying to deny people the ability to build buildings and demanding everyone gets free housing. That's not how the economy works. If you want something, get out, get a job. You can't live on social security your entire life and expect to have a house. So if you want something, get out, get it, work hard. You're not getting anything for free bums.
Thank you for your comments. Your next speaker is Mike Snell. Mike Snell, if you'll unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I would love to see the last speaker in person, so I'm not hard to find. So I won't spend any more time on that. But going forward, the definition of racism, no other race can be racist. First of all, no other race, no other race has had to have laws created against it because of its racial actions and through policy, through all these other means. So you can't be pro-white and call yourself a non-racist because pro-white is being racist, okay? That's just the facts of it. Race is white, race was created by white people. So if maybe you go to school, go back to school, do some further education, you'll have that knowledge that race was actually created by white people. Black people who came over from Africa didn't create race. The indigenous folks here didn't create race. Everything was tribal, everything was setstone, everything was take as you need. But now, because of capitalism, which was also a racist foundation, we have the issue that we're having that drives homelessness. And crony capitalism is what drives the housing crisis that we're seeing now because there's only so much money in the monetary system that's being sucked up by those in the higher, in the higher tax brackets. Going forward, lost my place. Going forward, we can't fix the issues with capitalism at federal or state level, but what we can do is ensure that and encourage our major employers locally to pay livable wages. Nobody can even purchase a home, let alone barely pay for rent at the current existing wages because of the inflationary economy that we're in. Cannabis shouldn't be the only industry that is sin taxed. If we're going towards an eco-sustainable future, we have to look at the facts, and the fact alcohol is doing serious and severe damage every day. And why are they not being included in community outreach plans and having to pay tax dollars to support local outreach, homelessness, and youth because they are a problem in our community? Let's widen our tax base and keep it fair. That's my time, and now we did.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Scotty.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, so today, I'm going to be talking about the synagogue of Satan and the control they have on our Western civilizations. I'd like to start off with a quote from our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. "I know thy works in tribulation and poverty, but thou art rich. And I know the blasphemy of them which say they are Jews and are not, but are the synagogue of Satan."
Madam City Attorney?
Revelation 29.
It's not related to anything within the subject matter of the city's jurisdiction?
Thank you.
It seems every aspect of our lives.
The speaker will speak to the items related to the city. If not, they'll concede their time.
It seems every aspect of our lives are being controlled by this small group of Talmudic individuals, which is easily proven for those willing to accept the truth and disregard the brainwashing that has taken place over the past 100-plus years.
In concurrence with the city attorney, the comments are not germane and will end the time.
S-L-Y-E-R-S dot com.
End of time, Madam Clerk.
Jews are in control.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor, the speaker was not underneath the subject matter jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I want to thank everyone here. It's 8:47 PM. We hope everyone has a wonderful 4th of July, celebrating our independence. It reminds me of the day when I was sworn in to be a US citizen at the Crest Theater. You know, for those that believe in it, believe in their Creator, God bless America. For those who don't, thank you to the United States. And we are adjourned. Happy 4th of July, everyone.